So. Thank you. We are going to call to order the Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Tuesday, October 10th. We're going to get started at seven oh two P M. And the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States. And to the public, which stands one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two, public speak. So we're going to get started with Mike Plazey.
Are you talking about us?
Yeah, I'm I'm asking Mike Plazey if he has anything to add to public speak.
No, thank you.
All right, now I'll move on to Kathy Plazey.
I do. I just want to say, um, thank you very much for rerunning for the Board of Selectmen. And I wish you all well for your next. Election, which is November seventh coming up very quickly. And I believe your next. Meeting would actually be the day after, if I'm correct on that, unless you've changed that. But anyway, all of you, good luck. You've you've helped me enormously, helped the seniors so much. I can't thank you enough for all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's move on. We'll go over to Darrell Stein. You have to unmute, sir.
I'm actually not here for the public speak. I was going to wait for the new business having to do with the catch basin unless it's appropriate for me to discuss that at this point.
Uh, it would be more appropriate for you to discuss it now because you won't be allowed to participate during the meeting.
Okay, so um, I had some correspondence with Eric Anderson regarding a catch basin. That's near my property. It's actually about three hundred feet from my property line. Um, it's in a very bad condition. Um, it could collapse, could cause a vehicle accident. And if it is does collapse, um, access to my house and another house will be blocked. Um, there has been some disagreement between me and Eric over um, who owns it. Um, I I looked at the land records and the maps. Clearly, it's on town of Andover property. And um, there's there's nothing in the land records um, saying that it's um. My responsibility or my neighbor's responsibility on it. Um, I sent a letter that uh, detailed out um, my position on it.
Okay. Um, we do have that on the agenda. We will be discussing that.
Very good.
All right, thank you. Celeste Willard.
Uh, thank you. I have nothing at this time.
Okay, uh, Gretchen.
Um, I could speak for Gretchen. She's in my house. She's not, um, she can't unmute you right now. She's got nothing to add.
All right, no problem. Uh, Jeff Tracy.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I I thought I'd never have to do this again after I retired. Um, I'm I'm here with with Darrell. I'm the uh, the other resident of the driveway in question at five five four Lake Road. I have nothing more to add to what Darrell has already stated.
Okay, all right, thank you. Hank?
Good evening. Um, and just for folks to be aware, Hank Gruner, I'm also a member of the Conservation Commission. Um, and I'm here, I wanted to speak regarding, I think it's item eight on your agenda this evening. Regarding Joshua's Trust and uh, um, some proposed parking area and trail relocate trail location. Um, off of Skinner Hill Road. Um, there's a piece that I understand Joshua's Trust is recently. Um, come into possession of this adjacent to uh, town owned land that previously was part of uh. Um, I believe Route Six Alignment. Um, I walked the property two weeks ago, uh, looked over the um, notes that were in the package tonight. And agree that um, that makes a lot of sense for that parking area. Um, on the area that's part of the town land, uh, which is pretty scrubby right now and with a fair amount of debris and trash. Uh, and the trail, uh, the proposed trail location and the crossing makes sense. Um, that was proposed by the folks at Joshua's Trust to swing what, you know, where basically their property is primarily associated with the wetlands. The uh, the town of Andover's property, sort of a butt stat more in the uplands. And where they would need to cross the stream makes a lot more sense to do it. Um, where it narrows down, which is over on this, uh, uh, the area that's more by Andover. So I agree with the assessment that uh, um, that's been put forward by the folks at Joshua's Trust. It's a nice piece of up upland property and wetland. Once you get past the, the uh, the scrubby area along uh, along the road. Um, I also don't believe there would be any uh, potential impacts to uh, the ecology of the of the site with uh. A trail and passive use of hiking recreation on the site.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, for the record, I asked Hank to uh, to weigh in on this from the Conservation Commission's perspective.
Okay. We can bring Hank on during the that discussion if it's appropriate. Uh, Joanne Ebert.
I said, thank you.
All right. Um, Diane Grenier. Okay, I know, I know Diane was having problems with her sound earlier. So Diane, um. Maybe you can reconnect or come back to us uh, for the public speak at the end. And I believe the cell phone is Dennis O'Brien, uh, Town Attorney. Is that accurate? Yes, it is. Okay. All right, so uh, let's move on to uh.
Hey Jeff, Jeff, I think Diane wants to speak.
Oh, hi Diane. You had to unmute. No. Come on, we we give you operator error. We give you a five count Diane. I'll even I'll even go nine count. Ready? Operator error. All right, all right. Now, yeah, if you get it fixed, we'll let you break into the meeting and talk, okay? But you gotta get it fixed. All right. Okay, so let's uh, move on to additions and deletions. Um. Uh, do we have anything that we want to add to the agenda?
Um, are we are we going to discuss the stop sign at Long Hill during new business? Is that a new? I didn't really see it there.
Well, that's one of the ones I want to add.
Okay, okay, we can add that. And then another thing I was uh, thinking of is uh, do we want to discuss the A S parking lot or are we going to do that on Thursday?
No, we're going to discuss it tonight.
Okay, can we add that to the agenda then?
Yes.
I'm all set then.
But Jeff, was there something that uh, Paul wanted to add?
Uh, she wanted to add the parking lot. Um, Diane, I hear you gurgling over there, so you're not fixed. No. I would restart your computer. That's my always my go to. I'm going to give you my senior use. Restart. All right, Eric, what else would you like to add?
So unfortunately, I'd like to delete item number eight, which is discussion with Joshua's Trust. Um, unfortunately, the president has a family emergency and is stuck in Chicago dealing with something. So he is unavailable. Um, there is some information in the packet. I could probably speak to it briefly, but I think it would be better. To have that discussion directly with the president who is not available tonight.
Personally, Eric, Eric, just a quick question. We should probably keep it on the agenda because it's just things that we need to add, like going through, like. I know the Conservation Commission weighed in, but I know what I did on the back with the trails with the pools and and having a walk. And possibly some uh, some maps of like where this trail would go and some site locations where things want to be. So we we ought to have that discussion. So next time they come back prepared with that information.
Okay, that that is fine. Um, I would suggest you add item eleven E. Which is A E S parking lot crack and mastic ceiling. Um, and item eleven D, which would be local traffic authority stop sign on Long Hill Road slash Andy Road. And then I would also consider two other things. The first is eleven E. Which is move item fifteen B to item eleven E, which is Democratic Town Committee website. Uh, and then eleven.
Wait, 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 wait. Just just give me, give me a second. So we're talking eleven E is the parking lot. Repair, or we'll just call it the A S parking lot. Eleven F, what were you asking for?
Uh, eleven.
Stopping parking uh, traffic authority. Traffic Authority and then.
Eleven E would have been A E S parking lot.
Yep.
Eleven F would have been local traffic authority stop sign on Long Hill. Uh, eleven G, sorry, that was my error. Was uh, Democratic Town Committee website discussion. Basically move that up from correspondence to a discussion item. So it could be moved on if you so chose.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Give us one second, one second.
And then the last item would be eleven G, which it would be Norton Committee Scholarship uh, discussion.
Okay, so you threw an extra one in there, uh, the D T T D T C website discussion. That's under correspondence?
It's currently under correspondence. That was probably inappropriate. I should have put it in as a line item of new business.
Um, okay, so uh, just put that one there for eleven G and then eleven H.
Norton Discussion.
Norton Discussion. Okay, so we have four potential ads and. One drop that was dismissed, which I agree with Jeff. So um. I'll just make this motion that we add eleven E A S parking lot discussion, eleven F Traffic Authority Long Hill Stop Sign, eleven G. Uh, D T C Website Discussion, eleven H and Norton Discussion. Who's going to second that? You Scott seconded that. Uh, all those and any problems with those? No, all those in favor? I.
Okay, uh, Diane Grenier, congratulation on fixing your computer problem. That that deserves a hand.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Being being old is such an adventure. I mean, it's like, I got a new iPhone today and everything. So it's like, wow.
Wow, this is a big day. Okay, go ahead Diane. We reopened our uh, public speak.
Thank, thank you. I I appreciate you indulging me. Um, I I did have two things. Uh, one, when you talk to the uh, about the Library Board, um, um, appointments, reappointments. Um, it wasn't clear on the uh, the agenda here. Um, but we already have, one has been appointed Sharon Chushenko. We have four others that want to be reappointed. And then we have two alternate spots. Jeff Ballard is already an alternate and would like to continue being an alternate. And the opening would be for a second alternate, and that would be for Brad Kelly.
Um, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna speak at this point because, you know, normally we don't communicate back with public speak, but. None of those are on, the new people are not on.
The list.
It was in, it was on the list in the packet that I I pulled up from uh, Eric.
Uh, the list that we have has uh, Brad Kelly, correct? No, that he's the just, that's not how it's listed. So. All right, so you want to put Brad Kelly as an alternate?
Yes. And Linda Fish, myself. Kathy DeRozier. As regular members.
And Jeff Ballard as a.
As an alternate.
As an alternate. So one, two, three, four. And Sharon Chushenko is not here.
She has already been reappointed a couple of meetings ago.
So let's just put Sharon in. I I used to remember how to spell the last name. That's bad. Eric will be all upset at me. All right. Um, anything else Diane?
Yeah, the the other one is you're going to be talking about the Joshua property.
Yes.
Um, I know you guys talk about it among yourselves. I have no idea where that is. Can you kind of just, when you get to that point, describe. Where it is on Skinner or Wheeling. Um, it's somewhere down there, but. I don't know exactly where the Manchester Trust. Property is, or all I ask is that it get defined very clearly for those of us that aren't familiar with. Exactly where it is that you're talking about.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I wanted to discuss it tonight so we can kind of lay out, get a lay of the land Diane.
Yeah, I assume you're not doing maps and this is not a public hearing or anything like that, but. I said, if you could just describe exactly where that property is, I would appreciate it. That's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate your indulgence.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, um, so we've uh, added those items. Now we're going to move on to uh, item four, Treasurer's Report. Uh, Finance Department, this revenue summary, town budget, town road, town cash. Preparation transfers or expenditure report and the summary of the audit status. Eric?
So you will find all that missing from your packet. Um, that was definitely a screw up on our end. Kate was supposed to add that. Basically give you what she added to the last border finance meeting because it was only about a week. Or a week and a half beforehand. So. I take the hit for that one. That that's my screw up. Um, financially, we're in decent shape overall. There are no major issues. Um, on the finance end, the big thing we did is uh, we did convert payroll over to QuickBooks. So we are using QuickBooks payroll as of this pay period. Um, we have. Come up with some minor snags, but you know, they're Cheryl uh, and Chris are working through those. Um, now, so it seems like it should be a reasonably good transition.
Can you uh, forward that information on to us tomorrow?
Sure.
Okay, that uh, takes a lot that I did not see. So uh, we're going to go move on to item five, Board and Commission. Well, before I do that, does anyone have any questions for Eric? Jeff, Scott?
No.
Related to the Treasurer's area. As I addressed before, Eric, just let's make sure that the payroll tax returns are are. Well sorted out. And so the first set of returns that will be required to do um. Won't be required to be done until January. Um, let's make sure that we get them done the first week in January, not the last week in January. Right?
Okay.
That's if I'm here or I'm not here, okay?
Fair enough.
All right. You got it. Uh, item five, Boards and Commission Presentations. Let's address the Library Board of Directors. So uh, we do have a letter or. I don't necessarily know that was in the Library Board, but we have a request for the Library Board of Directors to be. Uh, seated, uh, and we'll go with the regular members, Kathleen DeRozier's, Lisa Kurtz, Diane Grenier, Linda Fish. And Sharon Chubashenko, who has already been appointed according to. Diane and uh, Brad Keel as an alternate and Jeff Ballard as an alternate. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
All right, so any discussion on the Library Board of Directors? No? All those in favor? I.
I.
Okay. Carol Lee and a note for the Memorial Day uh, Committee. I did not see that in the package. Oh. No, I did not. I saw a a letter or a request from the um, Commission on Aging Chair. That is not on the agenda. So what do you want to do, Eric? Okay, Eric, do me a favor. Do you have the email or the letter from Carol regarding the Memorial Day Committee?
Um, there's some possibility I can find it.
Yeah. Is it a significant issue or something we can address tonight, or it doesn't need to be addressed until the next meeting?
Uh, none of this is super time critical because all boards and commissions carry on until reappointed.
All right. Um. Just because I'll address it, uh, Elaine Buchart, uh, the Commission on Aging Chair. Has asked the Board to allow for alternates on the Commission. I'd like to push this off till next meeting and I'd like to know who's on that commission. Because I don't know who's not in the Commission for Aging. And then we can discuss. No problem.
Excuse me, excuse me Jeff.
I hear you.
Um, yeah, she I thought she was going to be on. She's away, but I thought she was gonna. Get on from Maine, but apparently or Canada, wherever she is. And uh, um, maybe she just couldn't make it tonight. I didn't know. She usually texts me. Um, but I'm on it. I'm the secretary. She's the chairman. Um, what we wanted to do, uh, we have right now, um. Uh, Ellie Scoog is on and um, Georgia O'Brien. And myself, so there's five members. And uh, our municipal agent is an ad hoc member and our. Because she comes in to report anything that's necessary that we need to know. Or if there's anything that we have to talk to her about. And the other two people, we wanted to have two alternates. Because we put um. Linda Armstrong would like to come on as an alternate and um. What's, God, I forgot. Oh, Kim Haw is on there. She replaced Judy uh, Knox, who went off. So she's one of the five members.
Okay, so you got five.
That's not too confusing.
I think I got it. George Georgia O'Brien. Kathy Plazey, Elaine Buchart, Ellie Scoog, Kim Hawes are the five members.
Right.
Okay, and then you want two alternates and Linda Armstrong is potentially one of them. Eric, when are all the Boards and Commissions re-upping? Or are they required? I mean, I I know that we usually allow them just to continue, but.
So it depends on the board. Um, we have boards that have one year, two year and four year renewals. So I don't keep track of when any of the boards are.
We we have four, we have four years, Eric. We have four years and we don't, we did not have to be reappointed this year.
Yeah. Um.
There is a in the original makeup of the C O A, and I apologize, I didn't have it in front of me, uh, Jeff, because. I did not know she wasn't going to be here to present. But in the original makeup, Jeff, I want to tell you. That the Board of Selectmen themselves are the people, not your group, but years ago. Uh, were the people that appointed the Commission on Aging and said that what they their duties would be. They said at the end of that discussion that if they if they had, they named five. People, a five member board and said that if they needed um, alternates in the future. So be it the Board of Selectmen would then approve or not, but that's.
I I I have no, um, Kathy, I I don't believe the board will have any problem approving alternates. Um. And you can get the alternates lined up. And I know you have Linda Armstrong. And if you have another one, you can have a a a quick little note submitted to the next meeting. We we will approve it. Eric, what I would ask you on appointments and. This page of appointments, this item six, can you put on here as a lead sheet all of the commissions? And all of the last appointment dates so that it stays there as a s- as a static page? So that we know what the hell heck is uh, up with all of those committing commissions and committees and um. It might even be something where we put all of the members that are supposed to be out there and just leave it as a static page. That would be helpful. At least to me, it would be helpful. So.
That's going to be pretty long.
Yeah, let's see how bad it is. Um, and maybe.
This is just appointed, not elected. So there's only nineteen commissions.
There's only, there's only nineteen of them?
Correct.
Wow. And you know, I'm really happy that there's nineteen of them, that we have that many volunteers. And I'm sure there's a lot of repeat of volunteers like the Plazys and and all the other. Uh, repeat uh, citizens that help out tremendously. And maybe what we can do is. That would be good to at least get a uh, in, even if it's only in one set of minutes, we at least put it out there like once a year. As to hear all the committees and but I would like the appointment dates on the lead sheet. Because I I would never have known that there was a four year. Aging Commission on Aging Appointment. So anyway, um, that would be helpful. Okay, uh. Um.
So you asked.
That that was on page five. I'm sorry, you didn't even have it. Um, I put it, I said on appointments, but that's not really. Where it should be. It should be on uh, like a lead sheet for page five, Boards and Commissions.
Understood. So you also asked for the note from Carol Lee. I will read the email that should have been in the packet. Memorial Day Committee Appointments, please revisit motion made. At the seven ten twenty twenty three Board of Selectmen meeting under item five A Memorial Day Committee. There should be five members and one alternate, and this was not clearly stated in the minutes. The incumbent members are Kim Hawes, Carol Lee, John McCall and Robert Post. Wayne Thorpe and Louise Goodman would like to be new members, would be new members.
Isn't that six?
So. Again, um, ideally, one of those will end up being the alternate. One of the two new members will end up being an alternate.
Okay, well, since it's the Memorial Day Committee and we have a little bit of time on this one, can we um, uh, ask Carol for? Uh, a a defined alternate so that we understand what we're doing and we will gladly approve that. And we will make it clear. I mean, because even that's not clear. Her email isn't clear. If you're asking for five members and an alternate, who's the alternate? I mean. Just asking. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so.
Wait, punt it again. Not a problem.
All right, uh, let's move on to uh, there were no appointments that I saw. Well, I saw the Commission on Aging, but we had that discussion already. Uh, we did uh, approve the Library Board. I guess that's under appointments, but okay. Uh, item. Seven resignations. I didn't see anything in the packet. Is that accurate, Eric?
None that I know of.
Good. Uh, item eight, discussion of with the Joshua Trust Board President. So. We're not going to have the discussion with the. Board President because of uh, family issue and he's traveling. Um. Let's talk about this, uh, what was in the package, which was a breakdown of a site visit that you did, Eric.
Uh, no, that actually, I didn't go on that site visit. I went on a previous site visit with them. Um, he walked it with. Uh, so they're proposing, Joshua's Trust is proposing that Bill Penn. Um, and James Cole would be Andover's representatives for Joshua's Trust for monitoring that property.
Okay, so let's let's explain the location of this property for the members so that we all can understand.
Okay, so. Joshua's Trust owns a parcel with a very narrow uh, frontage on Skinner Hill Road. Um. You know, as you, if you were transitioning from Long Hill Road to Skinner Hill Road. Just as you come up the hill, it is on the right hand side. Um, about halfway up the hill. Um, they only have about forty feet of right away. Um, it it is right adjacent to a town parcel. Um, the town parcel is a parcel that was given to the town with restrictions based. Uh, by the state of Connecticut after they abandoned the Route Six Expressway project. So that's where it is.
Eric, would it be possible to bring up the web G I S browser and share your screen and just show everybody? The Andover Parcel and the Joshua Trust Parcel?
Uh, I can certainly do that. It'll take me a minute or two, but.
That's that's fine, because I think it'd be relevant for this discussion.
Okay.
And it was, and it was requested by Diane, so just as understanding for everybody attending the meeting, we're. Under, you know. Agreement what the property we're, we're talking about is.
Hi, can I cut in for a moment? I'm afraid I'm late to the meeting. And. I know I wanted to ask for an alternate for our Commission on Aging. And I might have missed that.
You did. We, we spoke to Kathy Pelosi and we're going to approve that. I think what we. We will approve it at our next meeting and just as you can get the alternates in place. I know Linda Armstrong is one of them, and if you have another.
Right.
Improved. Yep, no problem.
Right. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay.
Eric, how we doing?
Working on it. Okay, can you see that?
Yep, yes, we can.
Can you see my mouse on that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, see this long parcel right here? Yep, this is one of the town parcels. All of these little parcels in here are part of that same thing. Although they're separate parcels, they are all town parcels now as part of the, that. Property that was given to us from the state. This parcel right here, which I am outlining, that says Manchester Land Trust is the parcel that is now owned by the.
Joshua's Trust.
Joshua's Trust. So. And I'm getting a little nervous now because I just got signed out on Zoom because it said I'm signed in on another device. That's not a good sign. I'm not sure why that is, but if we get hacked, that's the problem. So those are, that is the parcel in question that we're talking about. This is the Joshua's Trust parcel. It backs up to the Haverhill subdivision. You know, in a, in a bunch of the town's property. What Joshua's Trust is feeling the town out. Is whether we would consider collaborating with them. Essentially a loop trail that would encompass both properties. In an exchange, they would agree to help clean up the town property. Because the town property. Is. Full of, you know, tires and junk tires and just general. Forty-year-old dumping ground. As part of the process. So that's it.
So Eric, show, show the public where the proposed parking lot would be. Well, where's Alaberto's, where was? That parking lot, but there was gonna also be one on Wheeling Road, correct?
Not that I know of.
I thought that that's what this, the notes from the. Joshua Trust was.
I mean, I, I think they could conceptually. I, I mean, basically what they want to know first is, is the town even willing to have this discussion? Because they're not gonna waste their time if the town is not willing to even consider it. So the first meeting was simply to say, hey. You know, we are now a landowner in town. Is this something you're willing to consider if we come back to you with a proposal? So, I mean, you're kind of asking me to speak for them, but I'm not them. I am not Joshua's Trust.
No, I, I don't necessarily know we're asking you to speak for him. I, I think you're, we're asking you to just show us the properties and show the public the properties so. That we can have that discussion that you sat there and stated. I don't know, would anyone have a reason why we wouldn't want to entertain that discussion?
Well, Jeff, I think we should definitely entertain it, but I would like to. I mean, the, the information submitted was pretty vague. I would like to see what the proposed trail would be, where it would go. Where the proposed parking lot would be. And. You know, I, I know we had. We had the Conservation Commission on, but I would like to get wetlands to weigh in on that and see, make sure that, you know, the impact was negligible. With the proposed trail. So if they can come back with us with that stuff, with the, with that information at the next meeting. It would be kind of helpful to determine whether we could look into it or not.
Okay, so our marching orders for Eric is to go back and go, we'd be willing to discuss this, we just want more details.
Yeah, just like a layout where the trail is gonna go. You know, and I know, and I know that Coventry is considering doing that. Trail from, from Bold Notch on down and, you know, that's, that's probably incorporating some of this, some of this. Discussion and, you know, I could see, foresee it. Being a link trail into Nathan Hale eventually, but I'd like to see what the proposal is now and what they're thinking of doing.
Yeah.
I don't think at this point they have a set proposal. I mean, I don't think they're willing to put the effort into it unless, until they have an initial discussion with you and decide it's worth their while.
Okay, I always just wanted to see what the plans were to begin with, because we can't really decide anything. If it's worth looking into, if we don't know what the, the scope of the project is.
Well, let, let's go from this standpoint. It's, we're willing to have the discussion, we just, we know, we want more details, so. You can go back to Joshua's Trust and say, we would be interested in entertaining that idea. It'd be. Passive recreation for the benefit of the community and, you know. They're gonna sit there and. Take care of that, but I know where. The property butts to some of the residents, so we want to make sure that we understand what the trail is gonna encompass and how it's gonna go, so.
The trail locations, where the wetlands are on the trails, where they're located, that kind of stuff, so we know what we're getting into.
Yeah, I don't see this as a drawback to the residents. If the residents can access the trail from their backyard, I see it as a benefit for some people.
All good. I, I'm, I would tell them, Eric, that we're willing to entertain. The, the trail there, yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, let's move to.
Thanks, Eric.
No problem.
Let's move to item nine of the Town Administrator's Room.
Okay. Uh, so. We will, so Town Hall operations are going relatively well. Willie Bell has been doing a great job keeping up the Town Hall and as far as I can tell, the library.
Sorry, by, by the way, Eric. I would like to, to, you know, commend Mr. Bell. And I tell him every time I see him, he does a phenomenal job on that building. You know, I, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think the public needs to know that Mr. Bell. And his wife, who I found out was an Andover resident originally. They do a great job. That building's never looked better.
I agree, Jeff, it's a nine, it's a night and day difference.
It is. He cares. They care.
Amazing. It is amazing.
Um, so, yeah, he's been doing a great job. I discussed with him. The prospect of redoing the exterior window painting for the Andover Museum. So I think the plan is at this point to schedule that for next spring. Because he basically has the bandwidth to take on one reasonably large project. Per year and keep up with all the other, you know, cleaning and maintenance tasks.
So he is, and he is staying, correct?
He is staying.
No, he retired from Hebron, but he is staying in Andover.
He very definitely is.
Good.
Although his wife did make him ask if they could have like two weeks off, because they want to take a trip. And I said, absolutely, you can take two weeks off. We'll, we'll suffer through for a couple of weeks until you get back, but, but yeah. Nope.
Absolutely. He can have three weeks off, maybe four.
Yeah, I told him he couldn't retire until I retired, just so that you know. And I'm not retiring anytime soon, as far as I know. Um, we talked about Joshua's Trust. Uh, there was, we did have a RFP, we were supposed to meet tomorrow. At the, to go over with the, to one of the contractors that worked for the Andover Fire Department as well as the Andover Town Hall. I just got a note from him a little bit ago. He's got a family emergency and he can't make tomorrow either. So we're gonna have to reschedule that one, unfortunately, and I'm gonna try to get something out to everybody after this meeting is over. Since that meeting was tomorrow, unfortunately. We also, as part of that. We're intending to swap the Town Hall over to propane from our current heat source of oil as. In addition to the heat pumps we're installing in the town wall. My intention is to add two additional 1,000-gallon tanks behind the fire department lined up with existing two tanks. And some level of interconnectivity between those tanks for emergency purposes. It's doable. I'm working on getting quotes for that now. Unfortunately, that does require wetlands application, zoning application. That B-100A with the Health Department and the Fire Marshal sign off, so that's in the works, but it's gonna be a couple of months before we get that. Completed. I'm pushing that right now because I want to get that. Done as part of the construction on the community center. Not as part of the contract. But as a standalone contract that uses the same excavator, because he's already on site. So, but I can't do that until I have permission to do that, so that's in the works. I gave you the, the information for the state local bridge grant application. I think what needs to happen next is we have to go to town meeting in November and actually approve or accept. The state local bridge grant. Because, remember, because it requires a town match, it has to go to public meeting. Then as soon as we do that, then we can submit an RFP for the contractor to do the work. I have a proposal from Nathan Jacobson to do it. But it's over the cutoff threshold, which the Board of Finance has said we have to go to RFP. So that will have to go to a separate RFP. Unless the Board of Finance makes a decision not to. So the last one I want to talk about, we did get the $100,000 to do the connectivity study going down Route 316. We're gonna discuss that later under New Business 11C, because I'm gonna need a motion from the committee. To appoint. Or the, a motion from the Board of Selectmen to appoint a committee. To evaluate the RFP and choose a vendor for that. That, 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 I also went and spoke directly with the. Transportation Planning Staff at CROG. Because all along, what I wanted to do is do the study initially and then immediately apply for lots of funding. Fortunately or unfortunately, there is a solicitation for this year, but there will not be a lots of solicitation for next year. And possibly not one for the year after. So what that means to us is that. You know, we had the, the bid meeting today. With the, with, we had four engineering firms that came to the bid meeting, so hopefully we'll get at least four proposals out of this to review. But the goal has to be to submit. For a lots of grant in February. I don't know when exactly in February the grants are gonna be done, because they haven't, CROG hasn't announced the dates for that. But we're gonna be under a pretty significant time crunch. To get the lots of application out the door, because if we don't do it now, we're gonna wait at least two years, maybe longer to even be able to submit. And that's about the best funding mechanism for this, so I really don't want to miss out. So I also put in the packet and it's up for discussion later, the renewal of. The agreement with Bolton for services by the building official. Under the Town Engineer. Discussion, I've already talked with the preliminary engineering work, the design for the new pad for the propane tanks. I'm also looking at. Potentially switching animal control services to a shared service with Columbia and Hebron. That would give us basically a shared service just to cover the three-town area. And it would have initial state funding to cover a significant fraction of cost for a couple of years. But I'm still trying to figure out and work out what the actual relative cost is to Andover. I have no doubt we would end up with better service than what we have right now, but, you know, I don't want to. You know, go any farther down that road unless I can convince myself that it's gonna be equivalent costs to what we have or lower costs. So I'm just giving you a heads up that I am working on that in the background. Do, 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 do. We've done a bunch of guardrail replacement. As most of you know, we did line striping, the line striping contractor was in. Yesterday. Which is a little unfortunate, because I wanted to do that after we have this meeting, but we can recover from that, that's not a big deal. Bunker Hill Bridge. We, I put in the packet the report from what's called the Plans in Hand Meeting. Which is DOT's new meeting format for having their 70% completion meeting on site. So you hopefully had a chance to read through that. There haven't really been any, any updates on the Long Hill Bridge or small bridges in Culverts. As far as the community center, I was gonna leave that report to Adrian and Scott. Because Scott at least is on this report. We're still struggling a little bit with the filters at the Andover Veterans Monument. Still need to come up with a better solution. For that. As far as the senior transportation vehicle. They've sent me paperwork for this like three or four times. And it's a little annoying, but I keep signing it all and sending it back. But. When I talk to them, they still say we're on sometime in the next year to get the new 16-passenger bus for senior transportation. Which is fully funded, which is pretty cool. The steep grant, the 2022 steep grant. I've been working to get that project back on track. I met with SHPO, the State Historical Preservation Office this week. It seems like we finally came to an agreement. On what we need to do to mitigate the effects of taking down the old building. And also that they would agree that Scott Yeoman, as a historian, is capable of doing. The documentation for the original building that we're tearing down. Over on Center Street. So they're supposed to send me a bunch of information. This week, but I haven't got it yet. So the good news is we're gonna be able to get out of it without spending. Significantly more money than we've already allocated to upgrades for the Andover Museum anyway. So I think that will be okay.
And when you say that, before you move on, when you say that. And you came to an agreement, did you come to an agreement with the work that was proposed for the, the museum?
So the agreement we have is that. That credited towards the, so I submitted a bunch of pictures of stuff that I thought would be appropriate to. They rejected my idea of replacing the doors, because they said basically the door sills are rotted anyway. You're, you have to replace them, so we're not giving you credit for that. So what we agreed on is as mitigation, we will be able to do the exterior window. Refurbishment, which I should be able to have, I've already discussed that with Mr. Bell. And Mr. Bell should be able to do that for us next summer. So that will satisfy part of the requirement, and the second thing will be the replacement of the. You know, the interior ceiling in the addition to the Andover Museum, which is the part you walk in. When you walk in the entrance, when the museum is open. That ceiling was water damaged really badly. Um, that ceiling was water damaged really badly. Prior to the museum taking it over cuz that roof used to, you know, leaked for years. So it's one of those things that it really has to be addressed at some point. So those two things will be the things we do. Uh, officially to mitigate for the effects of tearing down the old firehouse. So that's actually less than I thought I was going to have to do to satisfy them. So, um, so I think we're we're in okay shape there. And we do have thirty thousand dollars allotted to those two projects. So if I can do a lot of the. The window work with Mr. Bell, just as part of his normal scope of work for the town. Um, that means I should have enough money to do both. Uh, both parts of that. So that's why I think I'm in reasonable shape. And they agreed that as long as we completed the work within two years. Um, that would satisfy the Historic Preservation Office. So I think we're we're in a decent spot for that. Does that answer the question, Jeff?
Does, thank you.
Okay, um, on to the twenty twenty-three grant. Um, as I emailed you all. Uh, we did get really good news. The state or the town was granted a five hundred thousand dollar steep grant. That was uh for work at the Andover Veterans. Uh, monument or veterans memorial field. So the priority was basically installing three pickleball courts. Um, and they will probably also be installed with basketball hoops on the sides cuz you can set that up to deal with. You know, to work for both pickleball and basketball. Um, and that will be fenced and lit. Um, there will be, that will cover the water supply to the softball field. Um, that will cover repaving. The parking area that's gonna be right adjacent to the pickleball court. Um, it will cover the installation of a playground, uh, of a kid's playground on that high ground. Between where the soccer ball, soccer field is now and where the pickleball courts are going. And hopefully that will cover lighting um of a soccer field. Um, the single costliest element of that is soccer field lighting. Um, this will require a fairly significant contribution from the town. But that's just, that's a fact of life these days. The state in almost all states. All state grants right now are requiring a significant match um to get it. In fact, if you look at the list of grants that were accepted by the state, there was not a single grant accepted. You know, that didn't have a little, at least a twenty percent match. So, um, we will have to go to town meeting on that too. Because accepting that grant will, uh. You know, the town will have to spend, you know, a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as part of the project or so. The good news is it gives us a budget of, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand total to work on down there, which is pretty healthy. Um, and some of that expense on the town side can be, you know, work in kind. So it can be work on, work by Public Works. And there's a bunch of the. Depending on what we get back for cost estimates. There are a bunch of that project that could be done by Public Works. So we have a way to to make the town match, you know, without spending a ton of tax dollars. Questions on that?
Uh, excellent job, Eric. Uh, that playground um will be. Very beneficial to the community so that, you know, you can get children down there and not have to go to the school. So any parent that has a. A child that's not in the school could go down there and use that playground. I think it's a, it's excellent and uh. It's a, it's great news. Good job.
Yeah, like the second uh Jeff's comment, I think that playground's gonna be a great resource to the town and um. It's gonna be good to attract some younger families in here, give them a place to have their kids play a little bit. And yeah, school hours when the school's in session, so I think it's a win-win for everybody.
And and as we know, the pickleball, pickleball courts are great for Andover seniors and getting them to uh. Get out there and be recreational and win medals. So very happy about that.
And I I do think we are going to have to put up together a little committee to oversee that. Because number one, I am not qualified at all to to decide what should be on a playground, you know? Um, and I I think we're. We probably ought to, and I, we don't need to do it at this meeting because we're not far enough along in the process. Um, we still have to have the intro meeting, um, with steep. To actually work out the details of the funding. But I think we ought to put together a little design committee, maybe at the next meeting, um, to start flushing out. What exactly we want and where.
Um, let's get through the uh, this, the November meeting and after the November meeting, we can sit there and uh. And and get a good, uh, we should, what we should do is we should actually do it right now. I'll make a motion that we request. Applications or.
Letters of interest.
Yeah, letters of interest to participate in a. Veterans Memorial Field uh Phase Two renovation to utilize the twenty twenty-three steep grant awarded to the town of Andover. That'll be my motion.
I'll second that.
Right, and then just discussion on that, uh, before we vote is, we did the same thing for the original uh phase. We had a a good group of people. I believe Scott, you were, you were on that, Shannon, Loudon was on it. Ken Romeo, I know was on it. We had a number of good people that participated in that and allowed us to uh come up with a good final product. That is very valuable to the town. So I think this will be, uh, this will be also very positive, so. Any other discussion? No, all those.
No. Oh, sorry.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So the motion is to request people to participate in that committee.
And just another note, Eric, if there, if you're talking to any other town administrators, like somebody in Tallahassee, I know they have Adams Adventure up there, which is a really nice playground. Um, if there's any other committees in any other towns and notes that they made or, you know, things that they found out along the way to kinda help us. And benchmark some of the other towns, cuz I know Columbia's got some really nice playgrounds in their park. So maybe we can get some lessons learned from them and then help us out a little bit with our committee.
Colchester has a really beautiful playground also.
So have you talked to some town administrators or managers? Just. Ask me, like, who'd you use for your playground? You know, do you have a committee? Did you make notes? Anything we could use?
Yeah, and I was actually planning on talking to the. Uh, to Craig, the guy at Hebron Parks and Recs, cuz I know they're just in the process of putting one in now. Um, and we had, we had some discussions about what they, who they went with the vendor and and how they went through. So. Yeah, no, that that's gonna take a bunch of work. Um, and I recognized after reviewing all the playground stuff that I am wholly unqualified to uh. Decide what's appropriate for for children's playgrounds.
Right. Is is there any way we can advertise? Is there a way we can contact the school? Maybe advertise that through the school? Newsletter that they put out cuz there may be some parents in pre-K and. And in the area that may wanna contribute. Cuz that would be our target audience, I would assume.
Let's uh. Uh, let's ask Celeste to sit there, reach out to.
Wow, yeah.
The PT, the PTA or the PTO, uh, whichever one it is called now. Sit there and see if we can get a a member of two for that that committee.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to help, but just so you are aware, the PTA is um. Raising money to finish uh the upper playground. Um, so we're embarking on that. Um, we contract, we've. We went through MRC game time, um, they gave us a quote and um. They seemed very, they came out and they did a site visit, so um I'm happy to pass that information over to um Eric, but. Um, we're in the process of raising money to finish that upper playground at the school.
Yeah, all right, good to know. All right, Eric, you can keep going. Thank you, Celeste.
Okay, so. Put on your thinking caps. This is a good problem to have. So we have underspent our connectivity grant budget. Um, so we have around twenty-five thousand dollars left in that. That can be used for amenities. And connectivity issues in that same general area between the athletic fields. And Center Street and possibly extending down the rail trail a little bit. We have to be careful to get not too far astray of the original intent of the connectivity project. But if any Board of Selectmen or members of the public. Have public or trailside amenities that they think you really need to add. That are related to public use and connectivity, let me know and we can discuss how to implement that.
How about a gazebo like they have on Church Street? With the tables underneath.
So. It's not a bad idea.
How about we put all of our thinking caps on and we come back to you because. I still believe you need to make the whole area appealing to the community so that they use it more.
I will say when you drive down there now on the weekend, it's not uncommon. To drive by and see the entire Center Street parking lot filled. And Lake Street at the same time and a bunch of cars behind the museum. So we're actually on busy weekends already. Basically maxing out our existing parking capacity, which is pretty cool. You know.
Yeah, just every time I go to Church Street and I stop there, there's always people at that gazebo sitting there and parked and. You know, just talking, it's like a just kind of a meeting spot where people will stop and take a break there. So I just. That's kind of my thoughts. It would be a great use for that money.
What about trees, Eric?
Well, we've done a bunch of plantings there. You know, in the future to shade the area, the seeding area. Um, and also to to continue on with the theme of making that whole area a pollinator pathway. Um, and we also paid for some of the trees along the sidewalk. Running down on Long Hill Road from that same fund. Um, I'd be happy to discuss it. I'm just not exactly sure where I'd put them. Um, if you got ideas about where, you know. Where shade trees should go, let's, let's chat.
Yep.
Both good ideas. I like them both.
Okay, uh, the trip grant, the state has still not. Uh, I called the program administrator the other day, is probably remember we submitted this one back in April. They've actually approved, the State Bond Commission has approved the funds for it. But the DOT Commission hasn't. Uh, met and actually decided. They kind of admitted to me they hadn't actually even decided. How they were going to rate the projects, let alone actually rate them and make a decision. So. That's looking like end of this month, beginning of next month before there's any decision. Um, the reason why that's slightly important is that will come in later when we start talking about the stop. Uh, the intersection of Long Hill and Hendy. Because that would be the one time we would have the ability to make a significant change to that intersection. Is if we're grinding it up and we're reclaiming the whole area, we could potentially redesign it then as opposed to now. Um, when it's, it's would be expensive to do now. So. Transfer station, uh, we have apparently managed to mostly chase the rats out from the area around the dumpsters. Uh, unfortunately, when they went to remove all the tires, the big pile of tires we have with the blue building. Uh, when they were pulling the tires out, uh, they realized that is now. The rats have basically migrated from the area behind, under the. Um, behind the wall, they're now living in the blue building. So we're working with pest control now on the revised plan to address bait stations and other mitigation numbers. Yeah, in the blue building. So that's not great news, um, but it is what it is. And that's pretty much it. You know, I did have some other complaints from individuals. Um, we do have a real problem on Aspenall Drive. Which we've known about for a while, but it's just, it's one of those things we just haven't gotten to address. There's some kind of artesian spring under the road on Asphalt Drive. Um, so the water comes right out the middle of the road. Um, and it's, you know, it's definitely problematic. Several of the neighbors are really unhappy with it. You know, I know in the winter, we uh, we salt the heck out of that spot because it is an ongoing problem in the winter. Um, it does appear that a lot of peoples in that neighborhood have pretty well saturated properties. Um, one of the neighbors was convinced that the road was causing his septic system uh to flood out. Uh, but his septic system is about ten feet in elevation higher than the road. Um, so I assured him the road wasn't the direct cause of his uh problems, but. You know, we all know there's been a uh inordinate amount of rain this year. And we are having an awful lot of drainage related issues that we've been chasing down with residents uh in general. So that's it from my report at this point, unless you have other questions for any of that.
So this was the first year or how's that problem on Aspenall Drive been previous years?
I mean, Jay said he's known about it for a while. It's the first time I've actually seen it personal. Um, it was definitely pretty bad. I mean, the water was squirting out of the road about two inches high. You know, so there's an awful lot of water pressure under there coming from somewhere. Uh, but it's, the road is kind of in a little bowl. And it's high on both sides. It's basically high on three sides. It's like a little draw, so you can understand why. Um, Jay and I have kind of talked about mitigation, you know, but. I I think Jay's thinking that. You know, until he can dig a hole in it. And kind of understand what the problem is and where it's actually coming from. Um, but basically what he's talking about is an interceptor trench under the road that leads downhill about. You know, uh, a hundred and fifty feet to the, a basin. Now, the the next basin that the water would go into. Is part of the state, the Route Six Drainage System, so it would require permission from the state. But we would probably be able to get it cuz the water's gonna go into the state's basin. Whether it goes in underground or whether it flows around and it flows directly into the basin. So. Um, but you know, that would be a pretty extensive project cuz it would be a fair bit of piping. Um, and it would be the addition of, you know, some sort of drainage basin and an interceptor trench and a bunch of things to address that. So not gonna be a quick project, probably not something we're tackling in the fall. Um, but it's definitely something that that uh, some of the neighbors are pretty unhappy with. Um, but certainly not the only spot we have of that occurring. That just was the worst I I'd really seen. Um, the neighbors called right after the last big rainstorm and I went out there and. It was pretty impressive and it's definitely, you know, damaging the road. So it's something we're gonna have to address at some point. Uh, it's just a question of figuring out where, where it fits in in the priorities.
Okay, um. Do we have any other questions for Eric? Okay, we're gonna move on to uh item ten, old business, uh, community, can, community center construction update. Scott, are you, uh?
There was a safety meeting this morning at seven o'clock, the community center room. We talked about, there was very few issues cuz there's, hasn't been much that happened since the last meeting. But uh, hopefully they're putting up the forms today and hopefully they'll be pouring tomorrow or the next day for the walls. And um. There was, unfortunately, when they were digging the uh trenches or. The footings, they had a pipe, they have to replace the pipe and redirect it to a main uh pipe. Brained it off, so they have to work on that in the next. Week or two, I guess. And uh, after that, they're gonna backfill. So as soon as we get the walls up, gonna be making some progress. That's it.
All right, um. Looks good. It's at least moving forward, so I'm happy with that. Uh, item ten B, discussion of blight and level of involvement.
So we're, we've been keeping on that, an agenda, I apologize. Uh, I was supposed to get from Jim, an update, did not send me a written one. Uh, we did have a. Uh, he did give me a verbal update. Um, you know, he's still discussing with the town's attorney how to deal with the Barnett issue on Route Six. Um, he is sending a letter to the guy. Uh, on Long Hill that has the mattresses and the other stuff because that seems like it's continuing to get worse. So. Uh, I told him he needed to follow up with them and sent him another letter. Um. You know, which is kind of the first step in official blight. So hopefully that will get addressed. Uh, the other house on Long Hill Road. That is directly across from Bear Swamp there. You know, the contractor's been actively working on that. It's looking a lot better. Um, I told Jim that he needed to inform that guy that he needed a. Uh. What do you call it? He needed to put a dumpster back on site. Because he's starting to accumulate debris on site yet. Um, so that's all I have on that unless you have specific questions for me for that.
Nothing right now. Anybody? Scott or Jeff, any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Uh, ten C stiff account update.
Uh, so the. I'll give you the long and the short of it. Last month, we made about seven thousand in interest on our stiff account. Um, we're currently getting around five point three percent on that money. Um, so year over year, it looks like. You know, we're gonna have somewhere, you know, in the eighty five thousand dollar. You know, range right now. Um, and then Cheryl is. Uh, trying to decide whether she continued to move more money. It looks like we can continue to move more money into it. So, so that's working out well. Um. You know, M and T Bank is not the, the easiest to deal with to move money, but we seem to have it figured out fine.
Okay, that's extremely positive news. So have we gotten, uh, any? Bank fees from M and T Bank that we need to offset against that interest?
We have not at this point. Um, but M and T is still not doing what they said they were doing and. We've reminded them multiple times that they're supposed to be providing us with. A secure courier service and they're still saying they're working it out. But they've been working it out now for like six months or seven months, so. Um, you know, I think longer term. You know, again, we're going to be a looking at a new banking solution for our main bank. Because they're just the service from them is pretty atrocious.
That's something that we should deal with off offline. But that is positive news that it's a net, a positive impact to the town for interest earned on its reserves. So. I'm very happy about that. Um. Item eleven, a new business, uh, item eleven A, a catch basin complaint.
So this, you had a bunch of information. In the packet from a resident in town, uh, Daryl Stein. Um, you know, in summary, a subdivision, a small subdivision of three houses. Of which two share a driveway. Uh, was, went in in the nineties. And as part of that, the applicant put in a catch basin essentially at the end of his driveway. His driveway comes down a steep hill. Um, there's a large drainage watershed. And then a catch basin was installed. It was supposed to be installed beside the driveway. But that's, you know, which is what the as-built looks like, but that's not what's actually there. What, what looks like is there. Is a catch basin is kind of in the driveway. Um, catch basin's not in great shape. It wasn't built particularly well to begin with. It was built with block construction instead of using precast. Um, which the town had abandoned by that era. But, uh, uh, the builder, the developer hadn't. So the question became, is that a town's responsibility? Or is it a homeowner's responsibility? Um, you know, the applicant came to one conclusion. Jay and I came to another conclusion. Therefore, it's, it's going to you as a board, uh, for discussion. Um. So the question is, what do you as a board want to do about this?
Um, I, I read the information. My, my biggest issue is, uh. Since this is a. An issue, I, I look at it and go, have we, have we brought it to Attorney Brands and asked? Just for a preliminary opinion to get like an understanding of responsibilities because to me. It, it appears to be in their driveway. I drove by it today. Um, it's, it's obviously drainage to collect water running off of the properties, not the road. Um. And so I, I understand that it might be in the town right away, but there is an easement granted for those properties. And I would just like an opinion. I mean, I would like a very quick opinion from Attorney Brands and telling us. Who's responsible? Because to me, on a common sense approach, it appears that the homeowner should be responsible for that, not the town. That's my opinion, but. Legally, I'd like to know.
Okay, I will refer that to Attorney Brands.
I mean, does anyone else have a problem with that?
No.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Um, item eleven B, um. Meeting on the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance and Board of Education Joint Meeting on the twelfth.
I don't have anything to add to that. Paula had said she asked that I put it on the agenda for this meeting. Uh, in case the board wanted to discuss anything prior to that meeting.
And lo and behold, Paula has popped up on our meeting. Yay, Paula. Um. I, I look at this meeting as a way for us to, to outline our understanding of our boards and what's our responsibilities. And what we have authority over or not over and just maybe working a little bit better together to get things done positively for the community. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Let's move on to, uh, eleven C, uh, RFP for Route Three Sixteen Connectivity Project.
So in last month's packet, I put the proposed RFP. Um, today was the, uh, RFP review, the contractor review. Uh, we did have four contractors show up, which was good. Uh, Barton and La Judas, Rob Noon from BSC Group. Uh, East West Engineering and, uh, PLA Design. So we got a good representation of design and engineering firms, so that's good. We had a good product meeting. Um, this will close on, I think, the twenty fourth. And we'll do bid openings. What I would like to do is make a very small committee. To do the review simply because we're trying to get this, we're trying to make a decision. Um, on the initial phase of this quickly. Because we have to produce, we got a grant to produce. By February. So my suggestion would be myself. Uh, John Guzuski, don't ask me to spell that, who's the town planner. And then Jed Larson, plant, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. That would be my recommendation. Keep it small. Um, because they're the ones that are, were the ones that are most intimately involved in that. Um, that would be my recommendation, but. Obviously you can choose whoever you want for an RFP review. Um, prior to approval of any kind of contract.
Uh, I have no problem with that. Do you want us to make a motion to that?
That would be good. If you're gonna empower us as a panel by the purchasing policy. You're the body that, that designates who that is.
Okay, does anyone on the board have anyone else that they would like pointed to that? Anybody? No?
No.
So, um. I'll make a motion that we appoint a committee. To evaluate the RFPs for the Route Three Sixteen Connectivity Project. And Eric, I'm gonna ask for your assistance. That's not part of the motion on this next part. Uh, members of that committee, uh, should be Eric Anderson, Jed Larson.
And John, I'll give you his last name in just a second. Uh. Guskowski, which is G U S Z K O W S K I.
Okay, and I take that as part of my motion. So those three members.
Second.
Right? All those in favor? I. Okay. Uh, eleven D, a building inspector contract.
So I threw this in your packet. Uh, so this is super late. This was supposed to start at the beginning of this fiscal year. It's basically what we budgeted for this fiscal year, um, but. You know, I always send you the contracts. So to see whether you have any questions. And also to get feedback from you on where you think, how you think we're doing as far as the building, uh, official goes. Um, and if there's anything you want to do before me signing that contract.
Has it been reviewed by Attorney O'Brien?
Uh. Not this year's version of it. Um. This contract has been reviewed by him in previous years. I can certainly send him this version.
Um, if you would, uh, it always helps. To sit there and have him, uh, put his eyes on. Contracts that we're gonna sign. Uh. Do you have any issues with it, Eric?
I do not.
Okay. Do you have any problems with how the building inspector is working?
Um, overall, no, I think it's running reasonably smoothly. Um, so no, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied with where it's going overall.
Anybody else have any other questions related to this?
No, if, if the. Our attorney finds out that it's fine, can Eric? Sign it?
Sure, make a motion to that.
I'll make a motion that have, after Attorney O'Brien. Completes his. Work looking at the contract that Eric can sign it and give it to Town of Bolton.
I'll second.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor? Hi. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, eleven E, uh, the AES Parking Lot Discussion.
Sure, so. I sent, I missed the packet because I didn't have it in time. But I sent you all a copy of, uh, what the contract would be with Indus. For both mastic sealing as well as crack sealing. Um, in an explanation of both. So basically. You know. No matter who we use for crack sealing and mastic sealing. Um, we're gonna have to bring in a contractor a day at a time. Because either we're using Gorman out of New York. Um, you know, or we're using Indus, which is up, you know, in the Boston area. So they're pretty much only willing to work a day at a time. So, but there's more than one day work in the upper. Uh, there's more. Work than just the upper parking lot that would work in a one day increment. So what we would do is we would schedule this for Saturday. We would do the upper lot and then we would do the lower lot at AES because that needs some work too. And we would get. Probably some work done at the town hall lot. And potentially at the, the shared lot between the town hall and the fire department out of this. So my guess would be the cost that would be associated by the upper lot only. Would be in the eight to ten thousand dollar range. Total project cost would be in the low to mid twenties. That's, that's what it would be. Um. So Jeff asked me to bring that back to the whole Board of Selectmen. Um, given that we've solved the budget issues with, uh. Public Works, we definitely can fit this in the budget right now. Um, so it's just a question of, of what we want to agree to. Um, personally, I would say at this point. I would probably just do it. Um, but if we're gonna do it, we need to make a decision quickly. Because we have a fairly narrow window. We have to get this done. And we'd have to sign a contract pretty quickly if, if we're gonna do this.
Have both the contractors confirm that they can fit us into the schedule if we go this route?
Um. We did not, Gorman, I don't think can fit us in. So that's not even an issue. Um, Indus probably can fit us in.
And, and, and Indus is doing what application?
So Indus would be doing both crack sealing and mastic sealing. Um, and they're very similar products. Um, mastic just gets applied with a different technique. Because it's like crack seal, but it's got big aggregate in it. So it works in wide things. And there's a, there are some wide cracks. At the, uh. At the upper parking lot and the lower parking lot that would, would work well with mastic. And mastic is a great way, if you're worried about ramps. And discontinuities where the catch basins are. Uh, mastic is a great way to kind of ramp those and shape those so there's no, nothing to, there's no trip hazards on there. Um, so. That's, that's why we would use some of each.
So if I'm looking at the Indus quote, it's twenty four thousand dollars. In the ballpark, it's a little lower, it's fifteen.
And, and, and those are plus or minus. Because, um, Indus is working off the Capital Regional Council of Governments bids. That's who we're, we're basically glomming onto for this. Um, so. It's per material, so it depends on exactly how much they apply in a given day. So there's some variability in that price. Um.
But what I was getting at is you're basically taking a third of that and saying that is the upper parking lot basketball court area. And then the other third of that is. The school parking lot and the other third of that is the town. Parking lots.
Well, probably more. So the lower lot needs a lot of crack sealing. Um, but there's only four or five spots where it needs mastic sealing. So. The two things are a little different. Um. I, my guess would be. The upper parking lot is about a third of the total time and materials we would need. The lower parking lot is a bigger fraction. And the town hall parking lot and the fire department parking lot will do as much as we can with what we have left built. That's would not, I mean, I, I would bet we get to the town parking lot with the mastic. Applicator. I don't know that we get to the town parking lot with the crack sealing contract.
Okay, but from, um. A mental standpoint, we are, um. We are looking at doing a repair to the upper parking lot for the school that we anticipate. Uh, reclaiming within the next twelve months.
That is true. Yep.
Um. All right, I guess I, I'm gonna, uh, I would like to. Invite in Celeste Willard, who's on the Board of Education, just to ask a question so that we can. Um. Celeste, how, um. Since it is a, a certain amount of money that we, we, we would be investing as a town to. Uh, maintain or do some maintenance on that parking lot, is it truly necessary? Before we go to the reclamation? Is that, is that the opinion of the Board of Education?
It, it is, Jeff. Um, the parking lot is closed because it's because we have that big crack. There's areas that are, that aren't safe. So we've closed it. So we've closed it. Um, it's being used only for like emergency purposes only. Or if you have to, you know, drop off your, your child or pick it up, you know, pick up your child, but it's not being used in the normal course of the day-to-day uh pickup and drop-off. Um, but we are respectfully requesting that we get we put a Band-Aid on it, so to speak, so where we can use it. Otherwise, it's gonna be closed until we can get on the schedule to have it completely done, which won't be done until the spring of next year.
Alright, thank you. Um. So. Let's get past the issue, that issue. Let's talk financial side of this, Eric. Um, I know there is some, there are some funds that sit there and have been out there and in school renovation that was mentioned in the memo. Where, where would we be taking this money from?
So short of any other decision from the board, this money would come from the road improvement fund.
Which we already have a problem.
Not anymore.
Anymore.
Uh, Board of Finance made that fun whole, so you know, we're back to our original boat, our original budget for road improvement fund.
Okay. That's good to know. I'm glad they did that.
Right, that's why I'm not so worried about, if that hadn't been done, I'm not sure I would have said we have the ability to do it, but I think at this point we do. It's just a question of whether we want to.
Uh, if we do this, how, how long would the lower parking lot have before you would recommend redoing the lower parking lot?
I mean, in truth, the lower parking lot is every bit as bad as the upper parking lot. It does need to get reclaimed. But the reality is that's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar plus you know project. And I don't necessarily think we're gonna do it anytime soon. Because when you take the totality of what Public Works has to do, I mean, if I had to choose between that and you know, a functional repair to Ridge Road, I would probably choose Ridge Road today because I, I think you know, we have bigger fish to fry when we look at it on a town basis.
I, I understand there's other priorities. I'm asking you, if you had it on a calendar, how soon would you want to do it? Forgetting other ca- other priorities, like is it can it last five years with this mastic? Can it last four years with this, this Band-Aid that we're putting on it? I mean.
So prior to the discussion uh regarding the upper lot and their, the, the Board of Ed's wanting to reclaim that, uh, what Jay and I had kind of proposed internally and in cost estimated was crack sealing both lots. And then uh bringing contractor in, saw cutting out the, the big gap in the basketball court. And then grinding probably four or five fairly large spots in the lower parking lot. And then shimmying uh you know, in the next year or so. Which would have been somewhere around sixty grand. And I think that Band-Aid would have got us five years, six years down the road before we needed to address anything. Um. You know, but it would have been a Band-Aid. Um, ideally, over the top of that, you would chip seal to lock it in, but chip seal in a parking lot is really tough and would you know, it would last much longer, but it would really piss off everybody that had to deal with it. Um, so. So that would be my, my take on.
Okay, so again, we spend twenty-four thousand dollars on the upper and the, the upper, which we know that we're, the plan is to get rid of it, so I'm asking the lower parking lot, give me a timeline, it'll last three years? In your estimation, because I do believe the lower parking lot is just as bad as the upper parking lot in my mind and what I've looked at. So I'm asking, I mean, we're, we're, we're saying we're gonna invest twenty-four thousand dollars in two parking lots. Three parking lots and even four parking lots, but middle, the most at, at the upper and the lower school parking lots. How long is the lower one gonna last if we do this? Five years before we have to go do what you just said? Three years, two years? Give me a number, just.
I would not have anticipated reclaiming the lower lot in the next five years, personally.
Okay.
So a question I have, Jeff, is you said that the lower lot is just as bad as the upper lot. If we do these repairs, is the upper lot gonna last longer? Is it gonna still have to be reclaimed next year just because we have the money?
Uh, that, that's I mean, where I went, Jeff, was kind of different. I sat there and said, well, if we had the hundred and some odd thousand dollars, why not just go and do the repairs that Eric was asking for, for get six or seven years out of it. But do it really, really well, like maybe do a little bit extra to that and then you get five or six years out of it. If that's not the case, I mean, my biggest problem with this whole thing is if we're putting eight thousand dollars at something to have it. I mean, I guess I would ask the Board of Ed in a general sense is, is Celeste, if you don't have that parking lot open, is it really going to impact what's been going on for the first month or month and a half of the year? Is it gonna get any worse? I mean, if we said no to spending twenty-five thousand dollars on a Band-Aid, really? And we I mean, I guess I look at it as a town and go, if we spent, if we didn't do the twenty-four thousand dollars and then we reclaimed it next year, so we lose the access because the Board of Ed is, is determined that, that it's, it's hazardous and that's fine. We lose it for, for the school year. We then do the, the reclamation of the upper lot. We're still gonna have to spend some money on the lower lot to keep that out of the three hundred thousand dollar range in the next few years. It's a question, I, I mean, um.
I mean, my question, Jeff, is can we just, if, if it was repaired this year, if the upper lot was repaired like we're talking about, how many years could we get out of that upper lot if it was repaired? If we just didn't reclaim next year, we took that money, we put in that dedicated fund and the following two or three years, we, we cede that fund with enough money to do both the upper and the, up, the upper and lower lot at the same time. We do a full repave.
Uh, Eric had just said that sixty thousand dollars of repair work, I mean, scheduled good work on the upper and the lower lot would get us five years, I thought you said, Eric?
Yeah, that would have gotten us out. So we were, what we were initially looking at is setting that lot up to get Cape sealed down the road. So in other words, we do a chunk of work on it this year. We basically shim it and we chip seal the heck out of it. Um. You know, and, and that was presuming the town crew handled the drainage. And then we went back in the following year and Cape sealed. Now, talking to both the contractors that would have done the Cape seal, neither of them is at all happy with doing, with Cape sealing parking lots. So I'm not sure we could have gotten them to Cape seal it. Um. You know, but that would have been, that would have been my low-cost approach to how to put these things away for a period of time. Um, obviously, full-blown reclamation, you know, gives you the longest time between major amounts of work you have to do on something. But even after you reclaim, you know, four years from now or five years from now, you know, we would be there sealing or crack sealing the parking lot again. Um. You know, but it, it I don't know if that answered your question.
Uh, it, it's if I could just, I, I know, Jeff, you had brought up if, if it would still be um the a continued inconvenience, you know, given that we've been, you know, it's, it's been closed since the beginning of the year and we've been, you know, um. It, it is an inconvenience, um, the buses especially because every, everyone is being dropped off and picked up at that lower lot. Uh, so the buses have had to wait now, uh, where before they were able to get in a lot quicker. Um, you know, the traffic's been backed up um on the road uh during uh pickup and, and drop-off. Um, so it is an inconvenience for the parents, um, picking up and dropping off as well as the buses. And also just given that it'll be the winter time. Um, you know, we've had parents and we've had some students walking up the side of the hill um to get to the office. Um. They've been, obviously, you know, uh, the notice has gone out that they can use that lot if they're picking up their child or dropping off their child, you know, um. You know, for a doctor's appointment or, you know, something like that, but um you know, our concern is that, you know, they're climbing up the hill there and given the winter and the ice and everything, we don't want anybody to do it, but it, it has been an inconvenience for the parents and for the buses.
Um. Eric, if we didn't go with Indus, is there anything that the, the Public Works Department could do to assist with that parking lot on a, a lower cost basis?
So. We wouldn't be able to deal with the cracks. Um. We could potentially deal with the areas that are sunken around the basins um by going in with what's called class twelve asphalt, which is asphalt that doesn't have a big rock in it. Um, it would be possible to smooth out the areas just with asphalt. Um, it may or may not hold up well under the plow. Um. But if it was put down well and compacted, it might hold up under the plow. You can't really put it in the long cracks though, so it wouldn't address the basketball court. It would address the the uh basin tops only, the three basin tops that are sticking up a little bit.
Okay, are we using the basketball courts, Celeste? For playground?
Uh, no, to, to my knowledge, um, we're keeping the kids off of it because there's a big crack in the middle of it.
Um. And Eric, just so I understand, why could you not fill the cracks?
Because it's not really wide enough to fill successfully with asphalt. Um. It just, it won't hold, it won't stay in.
Yeah, staying to Eric's point, it's gonna have to be somewhat elastic because it has to have some give and take with the, with the, you know, with the heating and cooling of the day. And if we just put regular stuff, it's just gonna crack and come up. So it has to be a rubberized type of material that'll give and take with the movement of the earth.
Yeah, I mean, the only way you could do that with asphalt is to basically coming, come in there and cut a slot. You know, a foot or eighteen inches wide, so you have a wide enough area to do. Take it back down to dirt and repave that, which we might have ended up doing if we brought in uh Abbey Construction earlier in the year. But I don't, you know, so that would be possible, but, but that would be a, uh, that would take a while.
You know, like Jeff, anybody that's tried to fill a, you got a crack on your wall, you just try to put us, you know, you just try to put compound over and and fix it, crack just comes back. You have to V it out, you have to widen it, have to patch it that way. Same with the asphalt.
Yeah, but I'm looking at it differently, Jeff. I'm looking at it, what could I get to last twelve months?
I'm not looking at twelve months. I, I'm thinking if we could spend this money and get some more years out of the, the both lots.
You're, you're looking at it.
Long term.
You're looking at it to sit there and, and revise the entire project. What I'm sitting there thinking of is what if we, what could we do lowest cost possible to make the upper parking lot, let's, let's forget the basketball court for now, but the upper parking lot usable for, for the parents. Like what's the lowest cost alternative that we could use to uh have it available for the next ten months? And then do the do the project as it was proposed for the upper lot, knowing that we have a problem with the lower lot. We, we, you know, this is where I'm okay with somebody, if we, if we all agree that, you know, it's a bigger project. I mean, listen, I think if you, if you spent the hundred and thirty thousand dollars across both those lots and you made them viable for five years, just as Jeff said, and then you sat there and put these on CIP and said, we have to fund these, just like we are dealing with all of the catch basins. Well, then we fund them all, uh, we fund it and we, then we reclaim in five or six years. And I understand the logic, Jeff, I do.
Yeah, because I don't wanna spend this money and just tear it up next year. It just, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
That's why I'm trying to find the lowest cost option.
But I'm not looking at lowest cost, I'm looking at like logic. If we can get it out, if we can get it out, because that money, if we put in that dedicated account, I'm just looking, playing devil's advocate here. If we have that money and it's in a dedicated account that we can add to in the next three or four years, we can get economies of scale and get both of those parking lots probably done cheaper than two lots individually. Am I right, Eric? Like if a paving company came in and did both lots, it would probably be a little less money.
It would be somewhat less. Um, remember, one of your biggest single costs there is the cost of asphalt. Um, you would save yourself from mobilization. Um, your testing costs wouldn't double, but they would go up. Um. So there would probably be some cost savings, but it wouldn't necessarily be, it's, it's not gonna be in the thirty percent range, that's.
No, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying anything we can save, it may even equal out what we've put in for the patches on the upper lot. We may actually reclaim that in savings. Just by doing both at the same time on the road.
It is possible.
Yeah, I just wanna think of, just talk, discuss all the options here before we move forward with just a temporary fix. It's only gonna last us a few months, that's all.
Well, the other side of it is we don't have to do the fix and we inconvenienced the the school and the parents on the upper parking lot and then just do the upper parking lot when we have the available time as soon as it's, as soon as we can get that on the schedule.
Well, we gotta get that parking lot open. My, my take is we should get it open. Um. You know, and if we, then, then my discussion is, my, my point is, is either gonna be a long-term fix or a short-term fix. You know, if we just spend it on a short-term fix, that money's basically, we're, we're gone. The money's gone.
Uh, you're not going to get a long-term fix on that upper parking lot.
Well, Jeff, if we fix the bottom, it's just, I was told that the both lots are about the same condition.
No, but what I'm, I'm saying to you, Jeff, is if we do a long-term fix, Eric's already expressed that it is about sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars to do the long-term fix, right? But could you even get it to the next month?
No, I mean, we had Abby lined up with the likelihood of us getting them in. I mean, it's gonna be a push to do Indus. Um, the only reason I think they'll do it is because we're actually, we want them to do it on a Saturday. Um, and a lot of towns and a lot of groups don't want Saturday work because they have to pay overtime to their employees to be there. So I think, I'm not even absolutely positive I can slide it in this year. But they have said they will try really hard to do it.
Okay, but this fix, Eric, is part, if you, we do the larger repairs that are sixty to seventy thousand dollars, this repair is part of that sixty to seventy thousand dollars, correct?
Um, well, we would be doing the crack sealing anyway.
Yep.
That's the same. Um, if we were we wouldn't be losing money on the lower lot by addressing it now. Because we know there's a bunch of stuff we do have to do to the lower lot. So whether we do it this year or whether we do it next year, there is some stuff we're gonna have to do to that lot because it is heaving badly. It's got a couple areas that are really bad. Um, and we are, you know, some of the catch basins, it is sinking around the catch basin. So we're definitely gonna have to do something to it. Uh, and the curbing is kind of screwed up in a bunch of spots. So it's not like we don't know we need to address it in some form or other. It's just a question of how much money we spend versus how long out we think we are to reclaim it in my mind.
So if I understand what Jeff is, Jeff Murray is asking, he's going, if we spend this twenty-four thousand dollars across the three lots and then how much more money do we need to spend on the lower lot?
Like in the spring, in the spring. Like in the spring, in the spring.
Spring to have it um, in better condition and viable for three to five years.
I mean, I think you would probably want to, there's basically. Three areas where we would mill and fill uh in there. So one day or so of grinding and basically three days with a paving box. Uh, and the curbing. So we were looking at spending with Abbey Construction, you know, in the forty to fifty thousand dollar range. Um, for that, so that would probably be, if we're gonna do that approach. And you said to me, we're not gonna reclaim this for five to seven years. I need to get this through the next five to seven years, that's kind of what I would do. And then I would probably schedule it, so I did the rest of the town parking lot. Uh, because there's a couple spots in that that are pretty bad too, that really need to be cut out and addressed. Um, so I would probably do them both at the same time if I were gonna do it, that's how I would approach it.
And then I would go to Board of Finance in the next budget and ask, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars a year for the next five years. To cover the remaining costs of paving both park parking lots. I mean, I think that would probably be the most sensible way to go about it, but that's just my opinion.
So you're saying, so if I understand this correctly, you're saying fix the upper parking lot. Spend the twenty-four thousand dollars. But then take money and utilize money to repair the lower parking lot. For a longer period of time and then put it on a program that we repave all of the parking lots in. Four years or five.
Like a cap, we have, we put in the budget for capital to go into that dedicated fund for AES, so they, so we can park, we can do the parking lots. You know, once we accumulate enough money to do that. I mean, does that sound, does that sound reasonable?
And I just, I, and I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of turn, but I just wanna just remind everyone that, um. You know, the money was approved, the the, I think it was up to a hundred and twenty thousand, I, the whatever dollar amount, but that was approved. For the upper lot, uh, to get, you know, reclaimed and paved.
But it'll still be used for that, but we'd get additional funds to do the lower lot as well.
Okay, all right, just, okay, so what you're saying is Jeff, then the the one-twenty is earmarked for the upper lot. And then the additional money would be used or.
Whole project.
Okay, okay.
It would still be, it would still be spent for the parking lot.
It would still be spent on on that program, but not. Um, but more in a, if we did it this way, but more in any. Longer term basis to get the lower lot, which we would end up having to. But I mean, listen, it's all town asset, it's so, it's all town.
No, I I I understand, Jeff, I just, I just, again, I'm, you know, I just, like I said, we all agreed or, you know, everyone voted that the. That money would be used for the upper lot.
Uh, it would just be a question of when, Celeste, I guess, it's really.
Right. I mean, which I, which I guess it's, you know, next spring, I guess, is, or, you know, when when the contractor is now able to to do it.
So we could do this fix, but it's just gonna kick the can down the road, so unless we have a long-term plan or land-term fix to improve these parking lots. You know, I think, you know, doing it in chunks every year and putting some money away is probably the best idea, it's just.
Well, the one thing though, Jeff, that I would sit there and and get, you might have some economies of scale, but if we're not gonna get a huge economy of scale. We may as well do the upper parking lot anyway. I mean, and it's a question of what the overall economy of scale is gonna be between the two.
But my my point, Jeff, is you can just take this money and we're just gonna spend it this year and. We're just gonna tear it up next year instead of getting some value out of it for four or five years and we can keep the parking lot usable.
That is the. That is, that is my mental.
Yeah, I don't really wanna spend the money, just pull it up next year, that makes no sense to me.
Eight thousand dollars or something, it's going to be.
But you gain a year of utility out of it.
Yep.
You know, and you relieve the pressure out of us doing it as soon as you have to in the spring. And you put that project off to, you know, the summer when school is out and it's not and everybody's with. I mean, to me, I think that would be the 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 difference if if I were thinking about it. Um, and, you know, it's just like patching puddles. I mean, we do that knowing that, you know, a cold patch isn't a permanent fix too. But you need to do it because people are screaming at you.
But this is just expensive. That's where I was trying to go with. Can you cold patch it? What what can you do to not spend the eight thousand dollars in maintenance? Uh, in in this cost to sit there and and have it usable, that's what I was asking.
Right, and no, and I I get that, and and I mean, if I, in. Jay and I talked about that pretty extensively as to what the approaches that made sense. Um, if you only wanted to do the upper lot. Um, you could just bring in the mastic contractor and just do mastic. And. You know, you could probably do the whole upper lot, you know, and not spend the twenty-four thousand, spend. Half of that, but then you would be mastic filling the wider cracks there that. Are more economically filled with crack sealed, but are still a trip hazard. So that's, you know, I mean, I'm just trying to get you the best bang for the buck you can with with the contractors.
Would they come for just the upper parking lot?
Uh. They would bring in the mastic contractor just for the upper parking lot. Um, they would not bring in a contract, a a crack sealing contractor just for the upper parking lot. Um, they expect to have a full day of work out of it, because it's.
You you you've just increased our potential costs to maintain or to open up the upper parking lot. By four thousand dollars, which is what I was trying to reduce. From fifteen thousand dollars to to four thousand dollars was what my my mental side was saying.
Correct.
We could possibly do it, if not, we should just sit there and say, we're gonna do the contract for twenty-four thousand dollars. And repair, repair the. Do the maintenance on the upper parking lot to make it usable and then sit there and. Do the best possible work we can on the lower parking lot to make it usable for longer and to Jeff Murray's point. If we did it this way, we're just going to extend the timeline on the lower parking lot. For repairs and maintenance on the lower parking lot because we're gonna have to fund it differently. I mean, what Jeff was really saying is is logical in that. If you had a hundred thousand dollars to spend across the parking lots, you could make those parking lots viable for three to five years. And it would give us three to five years to finance and to fund the. Total reclamation of those two parkings, which has to be on the schedule to get done. So. It's a question of what do we wanna do, you wanna spend the twenty-four thousand dollars?
For, yeah, everybody has to be on the same page that we wanna make it. Upper parking lot has to be good for the winter for the students and everyone to be able to use that upper parking lot. The only way, we we've already found out that you can't do just the upper parking lot, you have to do all of them.
Well, you have to spend, you have to spend the twenty-four thousand.
Corner that we're, we're going to have to do the twenty-four thousand dollar mastic seal. On all of the parking lots.
Okay, and.
I'm kind of under the impression that we just do it and then when the spring comes around and, you know, whatever we have for boards at the time in the spring. We make a determination whether we're gonna continue repairing these lots for another four or five years or do we just tear up the upper lot and. You know, replace it.
Nobody wants to waste the money.
I think right now we need to make a decision as a board.
Right.
To get that law fixed and get it passable so people can use it.
So so that means we're we're going to. Vote on this twenty-four thousand dollar Indus quote. Or thereabouts and we're all, just so we're all aware, it's an eight thousand dollar maintenance issue. To make the upper lot usable for the next ten months.
And in the spring, we had the discussion whether we do, if we wanna reclaim it completely or do we wanna, you know, keep it repaired to give it a four or five years on it.
And that's something we'll discuss with the Board of Education as to what's the best use of those funds as they. Put aside for the maintenance programs or for for capital improvement projects, so.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Motion. Contract with Indus and get that rolling is what you're saying.
Yeah, because if we wait any longer, we're gonna, we're just.
Need a motion, Eric, for that?
Yes, we do need a motion for that, let's let's make it, let's put it out in public. So our other boards that are involved understand what are, what we're doing.
Right, a motion to spend the twenty-four thousand to seal the parking lot at the school in a town office building.
And we're assuming that's coming out of the road improvement fund, am I correct?
Right, and and it's town funded.
There's not coming out any of the money that the school board is is funding for the upper lot, we're making that perfectly clear.
Well, uh, let's let's go from this, um, so uh, who's gonna second his motion? I will, I'll second your motions, Scott. Um. Jeff, I don't, I don't necessarily know, I mean, yes, it's twenty, twenty-eight thousand dollars or twenty-four thousand dollars coming out of road improvement. We could sit there and move the money that was sitting there in the uh, school improvement fund. If we choose to, and we can do that at a later date, I don't really, I mean, again, it goes back to the same thing, it's all town money.
All town money is just an agreement between us and the Board of Education and Board of Finance and we'll work it out.
I mean, we could, we could uh, ask the Board of Education for money if if that is necessary. I don't really know that it's necessary because the Board of Education has already made it apparent that if they have over fundings, they're gonna start putting it in this account.
Yep.
So it's gonna go to pave the parking lot when we actually can actually pave both the parking lots.
Correct, so if they have an overage next year, they can put in that fund and it would go towards the parking lot.
Isn't there already eight thousand dollars in that? Fund?
There's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in there.
Well, since the town hasn't cashed the check, there is currently only eight thousand dollars in that pending.
So I'm saying that eight thousand dollars could be used towards the twenty-four though, couldn't it, Eric?
Yes.
It could, but here's the issue with that. The Board of Ed cut us a check for a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for a hundred and thirty thousand dollar job. So the town was gonna spend basically every dime in that account. Plus, we were gonna spend money out of the road improvement fund anyway, because we were on the hook for catch basins. Um, as well as the inspection services, as well as the services of the town engineer. And we would have had to eat any cost overruns. And anytime you reclaim, you stand a chance of running into cost over overrun.
Totally, totally understand, and yes, thank you for the details on that. But the issue is, and the reason why that check is uncashed. Is to allow the Board of Education the time to sit there and say what they want to do. If they want it, put in that fund, it will, it will go in that fund and then. This is where we have our meeting scheduled for Thursday, we just have to understand, everybody has to understand that we're, that the Board of Selectmen. Is not just arbitrarily deciding what to do with that money. We are trying to put in the time and energy to make the right decisions. And until the Board of Education understands that and and listens to what we're talking about. Like Celeste has tonight, and I hope she goes back and tells him. We've done this on every issue that we've discussed as a board. We all have differing opinions, we all wanna do things right, I think we're all fiscally responsible, but. Maybe we're not totally trustworthy, I don't know, but that's, that's an issue, Celeste, that's not just, that's not on you, that's.
No, I I understand, no, I I I understand, and I think, and I I think. We're all very hopeful that that meeting on Thursday will open some discussion and get better clarity, um. You know, as you stated earlier for for that meeting and just to kind of go back, I I think the hope was for that eighty. For that eighty-seven hundred dollars, the the money that was left over from that expansion fund. Was gonna go towards um, the the reclaiming of that uh, upper parking lot. Because we encumbered a hundred and twenty-two thousand uh, for that project, um, but. Now with the understanding that it it's gonna be more, uh, we did have that buffer of the eighty-seven hundred dollars left over from that expansion fund. To to help fund that project.
Okay, I've got a question, so Celeste, you had you had a special meeting last week. Um, I I watched, I watched a Board of Ed meeting um, in September. So from what I understood is the Board, the Board of Ed was clear about what they wanted that check to be used for. So. I guess I'm confused as to why we don't know tonight, I I I'm under the impression, cash the check and put it in the account. I thought that they had decided that, so Celeste, is that? What you talked about last week or what's?
So the the, we did have a special meeting, Paula, but we um, did not take any action on the check. Um, because according to the agenda, there was no actionable items, um, so there was no motions to be made. Um, so there was a discussion and we are going to further that discussion tomorrow. At our regular Board of Ed meeting.
Okay, thank you, I I wasn't sure, so I I wanted to make sure.
Nope, we just, we didn't have an actionable item, so we couldn't make a motion.
Right, and and so frankly, the the reason why I didn't wanna cash it. Other than the fact that Jeff told me not to cash it, um, which is a good reason in and of itself. Uh, was because as soon as the contractor notified us that they were not getting us. On the schedule for this year, I thought it should go back to the Board of Finance to decide whether they wanted positive. And I think it's also a valid discussion whether they wanna put that money. In the two percent non-lapsing or the capital fund. Because one of the things that's the auditor said was that you can spend the two percent non-lapsing account for capital. Projects, um, he said, as long as they are education-related expenses. And he would classify a parking lot that was used primarily for educational parking as an educational expense. So, um, I.
And I think that's what we're gonna talk about tomorrow night, where where that check goes, whether whether it. Stays with the town, whether it comes back to us, I think that's gonna be our discussion for tomorrow and decision.
Jeff McGuire, the budget for this school was how much last year? Four point.
Four point.
Two?
Four million, no, they.
Four million, and what's two percent?
About eighty thousand.
Right, so it's it's over two percent of that non-lapsing of fund is over two percent already, three percent, right?
Correct. Correct, so yes, that that was my point, they could not have put the whole thing.
Right.
Two percent non-lapsing account, but there's nothing that says they can't put some in the two percent non-lapsing account. And some in that, and the other thing is, let's be honest.
Uh, uh, again, again, let's not discuss what the Board of Education should or shouldn't do. It's not our point, that's part of our meeting on Thursday. My whole, my whole issue was I did not want to cash the check. And have the Board of Education then come back to us and sit there and say, we were doing something nefarious. Because we couldn't get it done within the, on the timeline, that's not what I wanted, I didn't want the issue. It's the Board of Education's money, the Board of Education decides what to do with it. If the Board of Education asks me my opinion, I'll give it, but that's not where we're at today right now, so.
Right, yep.
Okay, did we make a motion, uh, somebody made a motion, but I don't think we voted, right?
No, we didn't, we had discussions and then we got off on this this part, so uh, Scott had made a motion to uh, approve. The repair and maintenance for the Indus crack ceiling. Uh, and I seconded it, so any more discussion on this, uh, no? All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's move on to uh, eleven F, the Traffic Authority Long Hill Stop Sign.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, I appreciate, appreciate the collaboration and the participation and the agreement, thank you very much, thank you.
Good night, Celeste.
Good night, yes, good night, everyone, thank you.
Traffic Authority Long Hill Stop Sign.
Okay, so the Board of Selectmen acting as a cohort is the local traffic authority. So you were all the decision maker, final decision maker on anything related to traffic. The uh. The Public Works Foreman and I have been discussing a few intersections in Andover which are problematic. Um, one of them that we know has been problematic for quite a. Um, one of them that we know has been problematic for quite a while is the intersection of Hendy Road and Long Hill Road. Um, and um, we kind of both feel that it would be smarter in the short term to try that out as a three-way stop. It is currently a two-way stop. There's a stop coming from Hendy. And then there is a stop for those that are going. I guess that would be westerly on Long Hill Road, but there's no stop from the easterly direction on Long Hill Road. The problem is it's on a curve, so we're putting a stop sign on a curve. But we would deal with that by putting a stop ahead sign and also probably painting stop ahead on the road itself. Um, just partly because it's such a big wide intersection that, you know, there's. We've had repeated issues there. Um, I personally think the long-term way to address that is to reconfigure the entire in, you know, the entire intersection, and either square it up so it's a T-intersection. Or alternatively, uh, make that a, a little mini roundabout. Um, but that's not something we're doing anytime soon. But we could easily try a stop sign and see if that cuts down on the complaints prior to biting off on an expensive intersection redo at some point in the future. So that's what we're contemplating, uh, doing. Um, but that requires your approval, um, and so we're bringing it to you to discuss.
I was pretty surprised today when I drove to work and I saw this, the road was already painted for the stop sign, the line across the road.
Yeah, well, we can paint over the, the stop bar. We did have a slot for the contractor yesterday. Um, and so we took it, but if, if you decide you don't want it, we will just repaint over the stop bar.
Yeah, and, and through my email conversa, my conversation with the email, you know, I dispelled some of my concerns. It is a blind corner. Um, even if we wanted to try to enforce that stop sign, I think it would be kind of hard because like I said, it just, when you go around that corner, there's no way you're gonna ever see it. I mean, I, I looked at it today, and it's just, it's a really bad spot for a stop sign. I mean, I don't really know any place in town where we have a stop sign around a blind curve like where this would be. Um. I, I, I'm just not on board with it. I think if I even, if I, even if I stopped there to go to work and tried to turn on to, left on to Hendy, there's still people gonna be blowing down on the stop sign going the other way. Even if I stop or not, it's, I, I just, I just see a lot of problems with it.
And you changed the speed limit on that corner or something?
What's that?
Blow everybody down?
Would it work? No. I mean, they're already going way over the speed limit now. What's, what does dropping the speed limit do? Does it affect behavior? Probably not.
I, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, look out of the box here.
Yeah.
I am in favor of the roundabout in the, in the future because I do think, you know, people having to go around that roundabout will slow the traffic down in that area, definitely. I mean, I am support, I am supportive of that roundabout. But I don't know if the stop signs is such a good idea being, being on a broad, blind corner as it is. I mean, I know we had problems on Lake Road where we, we added that stop sign. It was kind of the, the visibility was pretty poor there. Heading up towards three sixteen, there's a stop sign that you can barely see half the time. It's obscured. Um, I mean, this one is completely a hundred percent obscured until you go right around the corner and you're maybe ten, fifteen feet from the side is when it becomes visible. If it's gonna be erected. So it's not like we have a hundred feet where you can actually see it. I mean, you have to be right around that corner to see the stop sign.
What are the rules for something like that, Eric?
Um, it's a local road with a twenty-five mile an hour or thirty mile an hour speed limit. So, you know.
Well, uh, what I'm saying is, I remember, uh, when we were talking about the double line that there were rules requiring what kind of line we could put on the road. So what I'm asking is what are the rules as far as stop signs?
As far as I can tell, you as a local traffic authority have the authority to put a stop sign there. Now, I would suggest if we're going to do it, we do everything we can to uh, draw attention to the fact that there is a stop sign there by putting a, a prominent stop ahead sign just back of it and also painting it on the road. So everybody, you know, cuz most of the people that use that commute that fairly regularly. And after the first couple times, they're going to know it's there. Are they going to ignore it? Yes, a lot of them will ignore it. Um, but, you know, the other thing I was looking at is what is the downside of somebody blowing that stop sign? And the, the downside would be somebody that had pulled up to Hendy, stopped, saw somebody approaching the stop sign from the other direction and going at the same time with the guy blew the stop sign in the other direction and collided with them. So, I mean, that's the real downside to changing that over to an additional stop. But the reality is you only need, you know, the, the collisions that are gonna occur as long as one of the two people stops, the collision won't occur. So in my way of thinking, by requiring all three of them to stop, you know, the likelihood is at least one of the two will stop, and you will, you will lessen the likelihood of a collision. But that's just a guess.
But Eric, my issue is if there is a collision and that is on a blind curve, somebody's gonna argue the point like I couldn't see the stop sign until I was right on top of it and I couldn't stop anyway. And that's my concern. It's, it's the visibility of it is terrible. And so like.
It's terrible if you're going too fast and you ignore the fact that you just went by a stop ahead sign.
I rolled up at twenty-five today and it's still, it's still pops up. Do you really? I mean, if somebody's traveling twenty-five, and by the time they see that stop sign, there's not, they're not gonna be able to stop in time. To get it, unless you know it's there.
If we're talking about the roundabout, what's, what would be the timing on that? How soon would that happen? Years, five years, ten?
Yeah, years. Um, if we got the trip grant and we were reclaiming through that area, I would spend the money to get a traffic engineer to design a roundabout for that. Um, but without it, it's too expensive to do, in my opinion. You know, cuz it's just one bad intersection among, you know, several.
Well, one, one last question, and Jeff kinda broached it, is how many accidents have we had there?
I don't know.
We're the traffic authority. Shouldn't we know the statistics?
Yeah, like when's the last time there was an accident at that intersection?
Um, I don't know. But since the only ones I have, you know, when I look at my crash statistics, I only have data for essentially bad accidents. So there has not been a fatal accident at that intersection. Um, I can tell you that.
So the worst case, so we don't really know if there's been any accidents. Uh, okay, so now as town administrator, statistics, number of complaints about that intersection?
A bunch, being three or four.
I'm a statistics guy, a bunch, so.
And what were that, what were the actual complaints?
People blowing.
People going too fast around that corner and, you know, I, I mean, I can tell you from a cyclist, it's a shitty intersection to cycle by. Um, that's for sure. I certainly wouldn't wanna walk around that intersection either. Um.
Not on the inside.
No, when I used to run, I used to go on the outside of that curve, either way.
Yeah.
It's too, that's just common sense to stay visible, that's all. And if there was a stop sign there or not, I would still run and bike on the outside of that curve. Just to stay visible, so.
Yeah, I, I think it's just gonna, you put the stop sign there and it's not visible. I think it's gonna create more of a problem than it. It doesn't sound like it's a, I mean, it's obviously a bad intersection right now. But I wonder with Jeff's point, that you put it there, then now you're gonna make a, a situation that's kind of not great, bad. And then in a couple of years, we're gonna change the intersection again. So is that gonna confuse people? Going from a stop sign to, I don't know, I'm just thinking. I don't, I don't know that the, it, it warrants a stop sign right now.
Okay, then we'll paint over the stop bar. Not a problem.
I, I grew, I grew up right there, Eric. And lived there forever, and I've never had a problem at that intersection ever, any, any bit of time that I've ever gone on that road there, ever.
So what, what provoked? What provoked this whole conversation about the stop sign? Is it that you just were trying to come up with a solution for the, um, the people that were concerned about the intersection?
Well, so, you know, we've both talked about that intersection a number of times, um, about what could be done there. Cuz in my head, it's one of three places where long-term we ought to be considering, uh, changing through a roundabout. And those three are the intersection of Gilead and Conan Geravati. Um, and the intersection of Lake and Lakeside. Um, and then the intersection of Hendy and Long Hill. Um, they're just, because they're all essentially bad intersections, that a very significant fraction of the public, um, doesn't obey the stop signs anyway. Um, and so there is a significant chance of a T-bone collision, you know, which is, you know, is the most dangerous of the automobile collisions. So long-term, you know, I kind of think those three intersections, if you say over the next fifteen years or twenty years or thirty years, we ought to be thinking about changing out two roundabouts. Um, you know, but then the question kind of came up to what do we do now? And the reason it came up now is because now we're line striping that road. Because we know we're not gonna do anything, uh, to that section of it anytime soon. So this was the chance, if you've got the line striping contractor out there, if you're gonna make the change, now would be the time to make change. So that's why we're discussing it. The problem is the line strip contractor got a little ahead of the, the discussion cuz they came in sooner than we thought they were. Cuz they don't necessarily go on the same holiday schedule that we go on.
Alright, so I'm, I'm guessing that the way that this is looking is that there's not, uh, an appetite to put a stop sign there. Am I accurate?
Pretty accurate.
Pretty accurate.
Problem, we'll paint over the stop bar.
Okay.
There won't be a stop there.
Do we have to pay the contractor that came out to put the line there? Are they gonna charge us for that?
The stop bar? Yeah, but that's one stop bar a month. You know, we probably painted forty stop bars this year, so. It's not, that's not a concern. We're having to pay the contractor anyway. Cuz it's the same contractor that's doing all our striping and stop bars and sharos and everything else. So, no issues.
Alright, let's, let's move on to eleven G, the DTC website request.
Right. So we got a request from the DTC to add additional links to the town website to the DTC website. And I told the DTC, that's not me decision, that should be a political decision. The two things I don't wanna weigh in on as far as the website or anything related to religion and anything related to politics. So that is your role.
Listen, it's a really not a hard one to deal with. Is, just, is the Republican Town Committee website linked?
Uh, not to a local.
Okay.
One, I think they just have, I think right now they're just links to the national parties on the registrar's website. I mean, the real question is, should we be linking to them in general? Um, the Board of Selectmen has in the past said yes, you know, links on the registrar's site to the national organizations.
Yeah, I, I know, I mean, if there's. Listen, e- everything here is about fairness and unequal. I mean, if it's, if it's done for one party, it should be done for the other party. It's not really that hard, not really that controversial. But if it's not there, then there's no reason to link unless there's approval from the Republican Town Committee to get their, theirs linked.
But I don't, does the Republican Town Committee have a local? I don't know who's got a.
No, that, that's not the, that's not, that's not the issue. That's not the issue. The issue is if the Republican Town Committee would like to get with the Democratic Town Committee and work together to do something positive for both their organizations, no problem. We should support that. If, if not, then we don't need to link anything.
To, to answer that, Jeff, I think that the links go to the Connecticut Democratic Party's website and it goes to the Connecticut Republicans' website. And in there, they can click on the local party and then the contact information is on there. So like, if you wanna contact the Chair of the, the Democrats, that information is there. So if that person wants to get ahold of the Chairs of either party, they can find them by the links that are there right now. And then if you go to the Democratic Party website, and if they wanna contact the Democratic, the Connecticut Democratic Party and link a website to Andover, they can do that.
Okay, so can I just?
Yep.
Let me share my screen and I'll show you what's actually there, so it makes sense, um, if you're okay with that.
Sure, let's go.
So this is the current registrar voters page. If you click on, under that page, if you click on political parties, it brings up Democratic Town Committee, Republican Town Committee. And the Republican Town Committee just has a link to the national site. Currently, the Democratic Town Committee has a link to the Connecticut Democratic site. And I think that this link goes to their Facebook page. So what they have asked to have is an additional link under that, which so make this, show this link is their Facebook page. And the second link is their, uh, um, you know, their regular website. That, that's what they're asking to do.
Um, I, I'll sit there and I'll talk to, to Catherine and, and have her just link it to the Facebook page. I mean, it's already there. I mean.
I mean, that, that's why I'm saying, uh, it's just a decision I don't wanna make.
Understood. I'll, I'll speak to her. I mean, but it's not really. Well, i- it should honestly, i- it should all be just equal, but we'll sit there and I'll address it with Catherine. If anyone doesn't have a problem with me doing that.
Yeah, and, and Jeff, I don't, does Republican Party have their own, the Andover Republican Party have their own Facebook page?
Yes, they do.
Does it make sense? Can, you know, if the board wants, do you want us to add the link to that here too, to even it up? Cuz I mean.
Yeah, I, I mean.
You just tell me what you wanna do as a group.
I mean, I don't think anybody ever contacted, you know, I never heard anything about, about putting anything on the web, on the, on the Andover webpage, so that can be done easily. We don't really, and then put an email contact on there as well, just like the Democrats do too. That's, that's not a big, that's not a problem.
I mean, if, if that's what, you know, that's what the board wants me to do, I'm happy to do that. I mean, I honestly don't care. Personally, I wouldn't put any link to the political parties from the town's website. But that's just me, and, and my opinion is, you know, may not be shared by you.
I think it would be hel, I think it'd be helpful if the Green Party, if there's a local Green Party in town, they wanna have a link to it, that's fine. I mean, uh, I think it's, I think it's beneficial to have a link to the state site and then the local one, and I think one each would be fair. So if you wanna have a link to your Facebook page or your webpage, that's fine in Andover. And a contact information in Andover, who you wanna get ahold of, is fine.
It, it's not costing us.
No, it's not. It's fair. I mean, it's.
Whatever.
Just be fair. People can get involved and join their town committees and stuff, and they wanna get involved, and I think it's a good thing to put on the website.
All the better. Hundred percent agree.
Whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, it doesn't really matter. Just get involved.
Okay, so I can tell my admin assistant to do it. What your suggestion is to, if you get me the link to the Republican Facebook page, we'll match that, so it matches what's on there for the Democratic Town Committee. You want an email link to somebody in the Republican Committee, is that Carol Bart? Committee, is that Carol Barton or who is that?
That would be Carol Barton.
Yes, okay.
Just, listen, just get the address and the links, do them separately outside the meeting, no problem. Right?
Okay.
We could talk offline tomorrow, Eric, I'll see you in the morning anyway.
Uh, no, you won't, cause.
Okay, did that get cancelled?
He cancelled it, I will try to put out that notice as soon as I get done with this.
Okay, okay, so I will get you, I will contact you tomorrow and I will get you that information.
Okay, so the, the board is on board with. Saying the Democratic Town Committee can put either their Facebook page or the link to their website. And then the Republican Committee can do the same, put the link to their Facebook page and put their. Email address, is that correct? That represents what the board wants to do?
Yes, I hear, well, here's what we'll do, I'll make a motion. That political, political parties can put a link to their state. Organization. And one local link. And. A corresponding email address. For the local. Uh, town committee. Someone second that.
I'll second that.
That way, it's all fair and equal and we don't have to sit there and have. If, if the DTC wants one or the other, they pick one or the other. If the Republican Town Committee wants one or the other, they pick one or the other. Alright. Um. All those in favor? I.
I.
Okay.
Thank you, that's clear direction. Appreciate that.
Uh, eleven H, the Norton Discussion, what's up, Eric?
Okay, so. Uh. Let me stop share first of all, um, so. Uh, Diane Grenier. Has. Would like to set up a scholarship. Uh, under her name. That would be kept by the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. Um, but. Uh, administered by the Norton Foundation. And I told her that that was appropriately a Board of Selectmen decision, not an Eric decision. Uh, to do that. Um, that's all I know, Diane is on the line, she might be able to give me more information about exactly what she's trying to do. Um, but I, I think that should be a discussion by you guys.
Diane, we'd love to approve you, uh. Donating part of your fortune to the betterment of Andover youth and higher education, so. Uh, please just let us know what you want to do and how we can. Assist.
What? Can I speak here?
Sure.
Um, ba- basically, um, what I wanted to do was. Set up a fund with the Hartford Foundation, they would own the fund, have the money, invest it, blah, blah, blah. Interest only would be available for a scholarship. For an Andover student. Um, basically looking for, to pursue the trades rather than a. You know, a carpenter, electrician, a variety of things like that. But I would like the Norton Commission to be able to be the ones that would, you know, advertise it. Um, put out an application, deal with the schools, uh. Um, select the, the recipient, um, get the money from the Hartford Foundation and have the check written. That's what I want the, would like the Norton Commission to do. And. I don't know what kind of issues that would be with the town.
Um. I, in my head, all we'd have to do is legally try to get an understanding of what we need to do. I'm assuming you're gonna have to put together some kind of agreement with. Hartford Foundation and you're gonna have to, because it would be, um. It would be something that you would have to provide us the legal framework for it and then we'll. Sit there and work with our end to make sure that the Norton Foundation has the. Clear direction related to what's doing and I don't think there's any problem. On my end with doing it, it's just. There's more work from your end to do.
Yes, yes, I realize that.
And we'll approve it at a future meeting, I.
Okay, cause the Norton Commission, the Norton Commission already handles, um.
Scholarship.
Scholarships, so.
Right.
Yeah, a, another one, they do one for the Historical Society, um. Yeah. So it, it would be the same thing that they do, only the, the money would not be kept at the town. It would be kept at the Hartford Foundation.
Yeah. That's very generous, I, I don't see any problem with us approving that at a future meeting.
Oh, perfect, I will, I will pursue it then and, um. See what happens.
Unless someone has. Someone has some other reason why we would not want a. Another plumber or electrician. Or. Someone, someone that's in a trade to get some funding, anybody?
Yep, so just a quick question, Diane, this would be for somebody that does secondary education outside of high school?
Yes, it'd be beyond high school.
So it'd be like Porter and Chester or something like that to go for HVAC or something?
There, there's like diesel mechanics and, you know, schools for that, um, even schools for truck drivers. Um, a, a variety of those kinds of issues rather than, um, a college kid who is studying Greek mythology.
Okay, I was just curious, that's all.
Yeah. And again, I, I thought this would be better to set it up. Now before I die rather than setting it up through a will, because, um. There may not be any money, it may all go to some memory society or, you know, healthcare issues, so.
Let's hope not.
Yeah, it wa- it wouldn't take effect until after I'm dead anyway, so it's like. That, that's, that's the plan.
Okay.
Yeah. And that is very generous of you.
Sounds great, um, Diane. Let's move on to item twelve. I believe we're through all of the special items or the added items. So we're gonna move on to item twelve, approval of the minute meetings for September eleventh, regular meeting.
Followed.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for September eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Alright, all those in favor? I. We'll move on to item thirteen. Tax collectors reports, report refund requests. Uh, there are some in our meeting packet.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, uh. You did have all of these, do these, uh. Amounts do, the delinquent tax, I mean, somebody needs to find a better report, it's. More consolidating.
So I thought that was a little extensive, the one that was sent to you separately. Was three hundred something pages long, but yeah, this is still. And I don't think we need to be reporting on people that owe fifty bucks. Um, but it is good to keep in mind that there are a series of people with. Uh, quite a bit of money outstanding. Um, and there was a note in from the tax collector. Um. You know, on there, that's basically saying that. You know. Um, there are a series of individuals that look like they keep. Basically get a, getting around paying their motor vehicle taxes by just continuing to rotate through who they. Register the car under. Um, and we have some that have. Piled up. A fair bit of, of fees. Um, and the question is, we just have to make sure we can catch them. Prior to them. Um, the problem with people doing that is when they do that, our real hook. To get them to pay is the fact that DMV won't release. Um, so the question is, can we put a release? That covers all the potential names that they're likely to re-register. So we can get them for back taxes or what other options? Do we have? Um. You know, in the past, my feeling has been, we don't necessarily go around them. Because delinquent tax people are the best investments the town has. Because every bit of that, instead of making five point three percent in the stiff account, we're making eighteen percent. Um, on the money they owe the town. But that's only if we manage to collect at some point. Um. So. We're gonna pursue that a little farther. I think at this point.
Okay. Um. Where, where, okay, so, uh, we were on tax refunds.
Yeah.
So they are, they are on page fifty-seven of our document.
Correct.
So, I'll, I'll sit there, I. My, my least favorite thing to do. But, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve tax refunds totaling six hundred eighty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Uh. Related to refund of excess payments.
I'll second.
Alright, all those in favor? I. Uh, department reports, does anybody have any questions related to, uh, any of the department reports that were provided? Okay. Uh, item fifteen. Uh, correspondence, correspondence. Uh. Fifteen A BMX.
Right, I thought I would put in there for your review, we did get a. Uh, request randomly from the public. Uh, I don't think it's somebody that's an Andover resident, but. Uh, he noticed looking at the state list that he got a steep grant who thought it was appropriate that we spend the money, uh, building a BMX track. So, uh, I thought I would pass that on to you. Um, I have instead relayed that to the DEP. Uh, Recreation Trails Coordinator, Kim Bradley. Uh, and told her that I think DEP should be the one that builds the BMX track. Um. I don't think DEP is gonna build it either. But, I'm leaving to that, cause I got that request. Uh, there's the information from Catherine McGoldy Lewis about the website. Um. She was, um. Quite worked up about it. Um, and then item C was the welcome sign. Um, but. The, so the, I, I put in what the EDC. Has originally proposed for a location of the sign. Um, that location's a little problematic, cause it is on DE property. Um, and they have subsequently decided, and Elaine could. Give you chapter and verse on it since she is on the call. Uh, to pick a different location. Um. It's the location next to over Andover. Um, with. Which is where the old chicken scoop. Uh, concession stand used to be. Um, the good news is it would basically be on town property. Um, it's adjacent to the state right away, so it makes it cleaner from our end anyway. Cause we wouldn't have to deal with DEP. And Elaine can, can brief you on that spot. Sorry, this, this mapping occurred before that decision was made.
Yeah, I, I know, I realized that, Eric, it's like, oops, yeah, that's, that's what we initially proposed. Um, when Art from Art's, uh, Custom Signs, who I've been working with, came out to take a look at the site that. That we thought would be a good spot for the one. Sign. Um. He, he pointed out that in his experience, and he's been doing town signs, signs for towns and businesses for over forty years. Was that it would just be lost there. He goes, that would just be a total waste, it would be lost because you had the Andover Congregational Church right across the street. Um, you had the library right up the corner. Um, you had the, uh, Center Street Parking Lot there and all the signage there and he goes. It, it's just, and he goes, how, how could that be a welcome to Andover, you're right smack dab in the middle of it? And so we took a better look and he said the better place to be, and this was his suggestion, and I did agree with him, would be across from the, um. The museum. The Andover Museum and, uh, on, up a little hill. And facing the traffic of people coming from Columbia toward. Um, through Andover, uh, and it'd be welcome to Andover and then the very. Things you see when you see welcome to Andover then is the museum and the, um. Um, uh. Veterans Monument Park. And then there's three sixteen and the sign that says Town Hall, Elementary School that way. And then, and then you're gonna approach the, the next intersection and see. Andover, you know, you're gonna see the church, you're gonna see the library, you're gonna see the rail trail. Um. And, and maybe someday the village knew that was proposed to go ahead and be built. But, so that made a lot more sense to have it there and then have ones very similar to it over on the other side for the traffic coming from. Bolton, a second sign over say by Shoddy Mill where the dog pond, pound is. Once again. It's the only sign you're gonna see right there. And then as, then you approach, um, the whole, um. Andover Center, you know, what we consider kind of the center area. So. So that's become the new spot. And as Eric said, it's way less problematic because it's actually town-owned property, we own that parking lot right there. So it'd be really easy to, uh, get permissions to go ahead and put the sign there.
Okay. Alright, is there anything else that we need to do related to the discussion on the sign other than figure out how to pay for it?
The Board of Finance already allocated money for that in the last budget. So the sign is, uh, paid for.
Yeah, for, for, yeah, for the one sign, we have, we have money for it and so now, um. Art is gonna write up a, an official proposal, now he knows exactly where it's gonna go and. And what it is we're looking for, so, um, that proposal should be coming out soon and I'll send it off to. Eric and, um, and John, our new town planner. Because John's gonna be very much involved in this.
Right, does he have any problems with the location as proposed?
Okay, barring any discussion from the board to the contrary. I would just, it's under the threshold and it's already a budgeted item. So if that's where the EDC wants to put it, I would just sign the contract. And let it go, but. Um, so barring the Board of Selectmen telling me otherwise, I would just basically sign it when we get. Unless you want to review it or you tell me. Something to the contrary.
Well, I would ask once Art sits there and does. The design that you put it. Where you are expecting to put it, I mean, because everything that's in this proposal is, is a. Is an incorrect location. So. Just.
No, we'll have to write it up differently, we'll have to, yeah, we'll do that.
You wanna see a different schematic of it before, and you wanted to come back to you for approval before EDC does it? Is that what I'm getting?
Well. You're not putting this in until the spring anyway. So, so come back to us and show it to us and then by the spring, it'll be approved and ready. So.
Okay.
I just, I just have one quick question, is this gonna be lit up at all or? Illuminated? No? No solar?
We, we, we talked about that, but we'll have to look at the location, cause the, the location that Eric wrote up and was proposed is all tree. And there wasn't any sun to be had, really, so. So now this new spot, we'll have to take a look at it to see if it will be conducive to having a little solar panel to go ahead and have it, have it lit up.
Yeah, it'd be kinda neat to have it lit at night.
Yeah.
Would look nice.
Yeah, it'd look nice.
And I think we have actually. Electricity at that parking lot, don't we?
Yeah, I think there's power there.
Yeah, there's power, so it might actually be an easier spot. If we wanted to just. Set up a. Electric sign.
Another meter for Eric to monitor.
Yes.
I would not wanna. Pay for electrical power. Just for a single sign. That would be inexpensive. You know.
You already have power there, you're only paying for what you draw.
Well, no.
There's already power.
You're paying for the service as well.
Right, but I don't think we're paying for the meter at that location at this point. But if we're tapping it and using it, then we would have to. To restart that meter.
Wow. Let's, let's think about that one. Alright, so that's the end of fifteen C for right now, so let's move on to, uh, item sixteen, public speak, uh, Elaine, you're it.
Okay. Well, we, I basically stayed on just for the bitter end, because that's where the welcome sign was, but. Yes, no, I, I do appreciate, no, I appreciate you, um, you looking into it, so, um, we will rewrite up. The proposal of where, where it's gonna go now. Um. And it, and, and like I said, it was something that Eric and I had talked about before, we had the town planner, we did a sidewalk and stuff and then, you know, it wasn't until. The next week. That it became cha- that it was changed and made more sense, so. So we'll go ahead and write it up for you, but. So we'll go ahead and write it up for you, but, um, yeah, so far, um. I I guess, I I just want to say that for Sustainable Connecticut, because, you know, that was an EDC initiative. And it kind of stalled because we didn't have any Board of Selectmen. Who would be willing to attend the meetings that are required or the classes, whatever, but I think we have a volunteer now. Who's gonna go ahead and take care of that on Sustainable Connecticut, so that's another thing that we'll be pushing for. In the next couple of months to get, you know, select involvement in it so that we can. Continue on with our process of of trying to become a sustainable ca- town. But that was it.
All right, thank you very much. Um, since the only other person on the phone call is is Attorney O'Brien, uh, we're gonna move to item seventeen.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, thank you very much. See you, guys.
Good night, everyone.